Making sure. They're gonna check in the back real quick. Okay, thank you. I call to order the business meeting of the Beaverton School Board on February 11th, 2025 at 7:08 PM. I'll note that in attendance, that all seven school board members are present today and our four student board representatives are all here as well. Bienvenidos and welcome, everybody. We'll now move to review the agenda. Board members, if anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda or pull an item from the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Tammy?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda as provided. I move that we add an item to the agenda to update the board on the actions the district has taken to prepare for the expected increase in activity of ICE in our community. I would like the superintendent to update the board about the specific preparations the district has taken to uphold our status as a sanctuary school district and for board members to be able to ask the questions that we have been hearing from the community.
Okay, so agendas are usually set weeks in advance of each board meeting, so board members can request a topic by contacting board leadership and superintendent or making the request in their individual board member comments at the end of the board meeting as well. So board leadership will review the requests and consider next steps and will communicate back to you next steps. And that may include information to the board in the weekly memo, information individual, small group. And in addition, I know that you had mentioned it before, I had also talked to Shelley Reggiani, our equity director, to see if we could have it added to our next board meeting. So that's what I would suggest, but if you would like to continue to add to today, I can...
I'm making a motion to add this item to the agenda for today.
I would like to second her motion.
Okay, if there's any discussion about that agenda item, so with that, we can, since the item isn't currently in the agenda, we can, if the majority, if we can get four votes for that, we can make that change to the agenda today. So, any discussion?
So in light of what has been going on with executive orders and from the president, we have, I personally have been receiving concerns from our community members. They want to know what the district's plans are should ICE show up on our doorsteps. And I have tried to get that information. I still not clear, I'm still not clear as to what those protocols are. And I think that as a leader on this school board, when my community members come to me, I should have answers for them. And it frustrates me that I do not have answers for them. So, I don't usually do this. I have never moved or seconded a motion to change an agenda, but I think that this is an emergency situation. I do not think that our community is going to wait until March for us to discuss this very immediate issue. So with that said, I second the motion for us to bring that issue to the table, let our community members hear what specific steps this district is taking to protect them, to put them at the center. Many of us here might be holding a blue passport and think this does not concern us. At the end of the day, this is our problem and we must tackle this issue head on. So tonight, I would like for us to discuss this. If there is no plan, then we have to have a plan. So that is why I will second that motion tonight. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? Susan?
Do we come to a vote and then have the discussion?
No, we can discuss and then you go.
Okay, I mean, I actually am in concurrence that I would like to know what our plan is for action, if and when there's a threat of ICE coming into the schools.
Any other discussion? Zunita?
Melissa and then Tammy.
I think Dr. Balderez had sent that information in our memo, but it would be nice to have that, you know, if everybody wants to know about that, it would be nice to have that discussion. Thank you, because it is an important topic.
Melissa?
I agree about the importance of the topic and I also see our business meeting, our staff does so much work to get us the information, so to put them on the spot, to ask for them to quickly put together a presentation and share with us information. We do have resources on the website. It was shared in the staff talk. It's been shared in the weekly memo. We've gotten updates. So, I think it's a topic of discussion, absolutely, and I wonder if it gives us a chance to have this, it feels like it's putting the staff in a space that may not be able to give us the information in a way that provides the structure that would be as helpful as possible.
Tammy?
I hear that, Melissa. I kind of agree and I wish that we had maybe had this sort of more planned out. And I have been hearing a lot from the community and the answer, the questions that they've been asking me aren't on the website and I haven't gotten the answers. I appreciate that this is a fast-moving, evolving situation and that the answers we hear tonight might not apply tomorrow. And I think it's really important to go ahead and share with the community, you know, we passed that resolution, which was beautiful. And I had a lot of people follow up and say, what does that mean? What are you actually gonna do? And the board isn't, that isn't our job. That's the weeds. And so for me to like be able to reassure the community, this is what happens. X, you know, ICE knocks on the door, this is the thing, next thing that happens, this is, you know, and so I think the mechanics of it, I think the community has a lot of questions about. And so, you know, this is why I brought the motion. I'm hopeful that we can learn the state of the situation right now and then figure out a way to, it's not quite COVID, but maybe there is a little bit more rapid sharing of information with the community of updates and maybe we even meet more often. Maybe we meet, you know, once a week on Zoom for updates. You know, I'm not sure what that might look like, but I just know that I've been hearing a lot and a lot of frustration that they, people feel like they don't have answers. So I agree, I wish we had, the staff had more time to prepare. And I think that if we don't address it tonight in this business meeting, I'm not sure what impression that might send to our community. Thank you.
One clarification question for Tammy and Ugana. Are, when you're, is your question about what will happen if ICE were to come to their door or you're asking about what would happen if they come to a school?
I just want us to have a forum where we can ask, I have tons and tons of questions that have been asked of me that I don't know. So even if the answers are not coming tonight, but I want us to show our community that there is a protocol already in place. I am not asking that we give the details. If those details are privileged or confidential, I'm not asking that we release those details tonight. I'm asking that we have it on record and let our community members know that the district has a plan in motion that we're putting in place to protect them should ICE come knocking on our door. Not only that, there are tons of questions people are asking that I would like answers to. And if I don't get them tonight, that's fine, but I would like it to be on the record tonight that the district intends to make a commitment to support our community members and protect them from ICE as much as we have the capacity or the authority to do. And if those answers are confidential or privileged, that's fine, don't release the details, but let them know that there is a plan in motion, that there is a protocol underway and with time, they'll be made aware of what those protocols are. Thank you very much.
So for my clarification was around, it sounds like from Ugana, from what you were saying is, what are the protocols that will follow it at a district if ICE were to show up at school?
Yes.
Thank you. Makes sense.
I need to know what impacts, what the...
What impacts we are seeing currently. You know, what should, I've had questions like, should our students come to school with their passports? These shouldn't be, a student should not wake up to go to school in the morning and worrying about whether or not they should carry their passports or their birth certificates. That's not okay. So they need answers. And if we don't have those answers, let's make them aware, make our committee aware that protocols are being put in place. That's what I need tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, oh, go ahead.
Susan?
I would also say that it's not just our students coming to school and feeling safe, it's their parents and what might happen if they're, you know, at a place of employment and they're picked up by ICE. How do we support these students that might all of a sudden not have their parents at home?
Yep, so I, hearing, I think we can call a vote to see if that's something that the board would like to hear today or if, yeah, because that's the motion to hear it today. And so we can call a vote and then go from there. So, all those in favor, and I think that the question was to get information for the staff today around the, what?
I can read the motion again if you'd like that I proposed.
Sure.
Okay. I move that we add an item to the agenda to update the board on the actions the district has taken to prepare for the expected increase in activity of ICE in our community. I would like the superintendent to update the board about the specific preparations the district has taken to uphold our status as a sanctuary school district and for board members to be able to ask the questions we have been hearing from the community.
So I think that the vote would be to updates, to get an update from the district today, added to the agenda. Would that clarify?
That would give us the opportunity to ask more questions.
That would give you the opportunity to ask questions, from what we can, from what we know. Okay, so let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously? I think if we add it to five, which would be like maybe items for information?
I thought five would be the good place as well.
At E, we'll make it last on that section. And I don't know if Gustavo, if staff could, if Shelley would have, maybe the presentation that you shared with us before with respect to what we are doing, is that something you could pull back up? Great. Yeah, and legal too, I guess. Okay, great. Thank you. With that, added to the agenda at five, E, all right. Is there any other changes to the agenda that people want to propose? Hearing none, the agenda will move forward. We're gonna start today with student performances. So Isabella and, is it Ian? Yeah, can you please come up? We can, yeah, because if you stand there, they can, they can see you on the video. Hi, welcome. Not yet.
Hello. Whoa, there it is.
I'm sorry, first up, tonight we have a presentation from our Southridge High School with two incredible singers, Isabella Green and Ian Maxwell Friar, along with their teacher, Mr. James Fuer. So, thank you. We'll get, you can start when you're ready.
Thank you. There's a grief that can't be spoken. There's a pain goes on and on. Empty chairs at empty tables. Now my friends are dead and gone. Here they talked a revolution. Here it was, they lit the flame. Here they sang about tomorrow. And tomorrow never came. From the table in the corner, they could see a world reborn. And they rose with voices ringing. And I can hear them now. The very words that they had sung became their last communion. On the lonely barricade at dawn. Oh, my friends, my friends, forgive me that I live and you are gone. There's a grief that can't be spoken. There's a pain goes on and on. Phantom faces in the window. Phantom shadows on the floor. Empty chairs at empty tables where my friends will meet no more. Oh, my friends, my friends, don't ask me what your sacrifice was for. Empty chairs at empty tables where my friends will meet no more. Thank you.
And I will have Isabella come up, also from Southridge High School. And Ian.
I don't need you to love me. I don't need you to love. I got. I got. I've got my sister. I can feel her now. She may not be here, but she's still mine, I know. She still loves me. Got my children. I can't hold them now. They may not be here, but they still mine, I hope. They know I still love them. Got my house. It still keep the cold out. Got my chair when my body can't hold out. Got my hands doing good like they supposed to. Showing my heart to the folks that I'm close to. Got my eyes, though they don't see as far now. They see more about how things really are now. I'm gonna take a deep breath. I'm gonna hold my head up, gonna put my shoulders back and look you straight in the eye. I'm gonna flirt with somebody when they walk by. I'm gonna sing out, sing out. I believe I have inside of me everything that I need to live bountiful life. With all the love, the love in me, I'll stand as tall as the tallest tree. And I'm thankful for every day that I'm given. Both the easy and hard ones I'm living. But most of all, I'm thankful for loving who I am. I'm beautiful. Yes, I'm beautiful. And I'm here, yeah.
Thank you. I might hear fighting tears. Do you want to come up and maybe with your teacher and we can take a picture and your family if you have family or friends with you? Thank you so much. That was very beautiful, both of you. It's such an emotional impactful time in the world that I'm just like holding on to all the emotion of the music that they sing today. I'm gonna actually hand over to Ugana to help us celebrate our award for this board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Monica Ba, I hope I got your name right. I'm so sorry if I'm botching it. She's a senior at Bayes. She has been awarded the Distinguished Youth Award by the Washington County Chamber of Commerce. Monica is active in First Tech Challenge or FTC Robotics and is the captain of her team. She has dedicated her efforts to embody the first core values by volunteering at robotics events to provide high-quality STEM education to her local community. She has also been a gold medalist for the president's volunteer service award for two consecutive years with more than 100 volunteer hours each year. Congratulations, Monica. Very well deserved. Would you like to say a few words about your award?
If you push the button, it'll turn green. There you go.
Yeah, I'm just really thankful to be recognized for this award, but I'm even more thankful for the Beaverton School District since, ever since I moved here in second grade, I've only been in Beaverton School District schools. And I really remember, you know, the impacts that all my teachers had, have had throughout my life. You know, I remember in elementary school, my music teacher, Ms. Inguison, really teaching me to find joy and being creative and putting myself out there. And I remember in the summa math program in middle school, Mr. Nelson, for really teaching me math in a way that I understood and I used for the rest of my life, basically. And I really am thankful for, in high school, Ms. Shell, who really supported me through like a difficult time where I was really considering whether STEM and engineering was the right path for me. But she was able to really connect with me and I was able to really connect with her by learning about her journey through, you know, education and through being a woman in STEM, right? And I think that those experiences I've really carried with me and it's really inspired... And it's really inspired me to really come out of my shell and explore my community more. I was able to present and advocate about STEAM education and equitable STEAM education in front of Congresswoman Bonamichi and Senator Lisa Reynolds. And I really wouldn't have done that without all of the amazing educators and programs that I've participated in and I've interacted with in the Beaverton School District.
Thank you so much. If you wanted to come up with your family as well, tell your mom. Thank you so much, Ugana. Next, we will have our superintendent's report from Dr. Baldetis.
So thank you. Some of this was written for the Friday memo to staff. We continue to see significant moves at the federal level that could potentially impact public education. Executive orders do not create new laws or change existing ones. The direct federal agencies on how the president wants them to enforce current laws. Without action from Congress or the courts, many of these orders cannot directly change legal requirements for school districts. They may, however, lead to legal challenges or funded impacts. We continue to stay the course following Oregon law, Oregon Department of Education guidance, and our district policies while the effects of various executive orders are sorted out. We will stay focused on the work that we're doing to support all kids in the district. I want to take a moment to reaffirm BSD's unwavering commitment to supporting and standing for our diverse kids in our LGBTQ+ communities within BSD, all students and staffs. In recent weeks, there has been an increase in activity and rhetoric that has caused many people and particular groups to feel uncertain and vulnerable. Our schools are places where everyone should feel safe, valued, and respected, inclusive of their backgrounds, identity, and orientation. We believe in the power of belonging and inclusivity. Our role as school staff is to stand firm in creating a safe and welcoming environment where all students and staff can thrive. Discrimination and intolerance have no place in our schools, and we are dedicated to providing opportunities for learning and growth to every member of our school community. In BSD, all staff play a crucial role in fostering this inclusive atmosphere. The support and understanding are vital in ensuring that every individual feels accepted and empowered. We encourage all to continue reinforcing the values of belonging and respect to support all of our students and all our staff. We, I know we're gonna talk a little bit about this a little bit later on, but we have held trainings for our staff to understand our protocols. If federal agents come onto our campuses, we are working with community-based organizations. I know you'll hear about that later on tonight. They are helping support our families and our students to ensure that they are informed and supported as best we can. This will continue to support and this will continue to support our families and students at the very best of our ability. This is a very nuanced time. Being an immigrant myself, very impacted as much of our community, many of our community, the majority of our community now, 60% of our community comes from diverse backgrounds. So I have, we've, we are on weekly calls with our administrative association. Was on a call today. We've been meeting on a regular basis with the Department of Education and Dr. Williams, who's our lead director, or in this state, the state superintendent is actually the governor, and there's a lead director, and that's Dr. Charlene Williams, who heads the department, and also with the governor's office. So I know that we are in sync in terms of trying to unpack what is happening at a very fast rate, a speed, and will continue to come out at us, I think, at a very fast rate of speed. So we'll keep you informed. I know you'll hear from staff later on today, but wanted to really share that with you. Also want to thank our BEA partners for working to ratify a three-year contract with the district. And also, we will begin our negotiations with our OSEA partners later on this month. So looking to begin that as well. So just want to thank you and look forward to the conversation later on about what I spoke about earlier.
Thank you, Dr. Baldetis. Now we'll hear from our employee groups. Lindsay and Kirsty, if you want to come up. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Perez, Dr. Baldetis, and members of the school board. My name is Kirsty Sakman. I am a Para Three Rover and the OSEA Classified President-elect. I am joined here with some of my amazing OSEA union siblings, as well as members of our bargaining team that is preparing for our full contract to be opened on February 28th this month, like Dr. Baldetis just mentioned. I've struggled today to figure out where to start. Similar to some other conversations earlier in this meeting, every day, things that could be true in the morning could be changed differently by the evening with the new administration, as well as the growing wonders and fears here in our district and all around our country and the world. We, as OSEA, are very thankful to Tammy and to Ugana for bringing forward the motion to bring conversation and things on record, and thank you to the rest of the board who voted to bring in that conversation. We recognize you put in a lot of work and effort, and everyone here puts in a lot of work and effort to prepare for these meetings, but in every day's changing climate right now, we can't afford to wait. We can't afford for too many of our community members and our staff to continue to feel worried and scared without guidance or without at least giving them the information that we can share and not hiding things like some of other people in higher government are doing and hiding or presenting things in falsities. Something I had intended to say a little bit differently, but after hearing from Dr. Baldetis and the team, I would like to know what trainings have been given to staff. Yes, I do recognize that I had been able to reach out as OSEA and ask for a meeting, and I was met with a meeting very quickly with a lot of our team and given resources to share it to our staff and that would be shared out. But outside of communications to administration, principals, upper district-level people, and then our front office classified staff, as a Para Three and as OSEA Union President, I have not seen or been privy or been shared any information or option to be able to be trained on what could happen if ICE is knocking on our collective doors, whether that be our buildings, whether that be meeting families on the street outside of our schools, being, meeting them at their homes or our transit centers. I know that we have asked and from OSEA and behind closed doors have been met with some answers to things like what do we do for our special ed students who may not be able to advocate or speak for themselves? What do we do for students that might be in our transition program and specialized programs who might be their own guardians because they don't have someone that is looking out for them or might live in a state facility and attend one of our schools? What do our staff do for them? I would ask that we just continue to keep sharing what we can and giving people the resources and access to know that even the simplest of phrases they can say if they are met. I know that we are hopeful that we don't have to be met with these challenges or these questions, and we feel very privileged living in Oregon, living in Beaverton, living in the Portland metro area, that we have things like Washington County saying they won't work with ICE. But the reality is, we in the Portland metro area live in such a mixed bag. We in OSEA talk often. We live in the 33, 33, 33. There is a large divide of all kinds of people. People that pay attention one way, people that pay attention the other way, and people that live in the middle and don't know where they live, and then the last of the ones who won't want anything to do with it, even though they're a part of it. We just hope that we continue to grow together and meet each other in recognizing it takes a lot of work to jump in and share information at the last minute, but at the same time, not sharing and waiting for our monthly meetings also isn't going to be safe for us right now. I could talk about this forever, but I won't. I will run it back to, I want to say congratulations to our BEA union siblings for their ratified contract and for all of the amazing hard work and dedication of their bargaining team and all their supports, as well as all of BEA that showed up and all of our OSEA classified staff that also showed up in solidarity and support in learning the process. We are very excited for them. We are also very excited and hope the district is very aware that some of those things that BEA was able to ratify, I hope you know we're gonna be asking for very similar, if not more, especially when it comes to things like our insurance, as we have already had our first insurance committee meeting this year. The numbers are not looking great, so we will be asking for our lowest-paid employees in classified to make sure that they are represented and supported for basic things like healthcare and for things like their cost of living, to be able to afford rent and to be able to afford to live in our district or near our district. We, as OSEA, are starting our bargaining on 2/28. It's the Friday, the last Friday of the month. We will be meeting here in this room, district office. We will be meeting from 8 to 4. We have met a compromise that our team is not terribly thrilled with, but thankful that the district was able to compromise with us, that we will be able to audio-record our sessions and then share them out later. We have been pushing and hoping to stay equitable with our BEA union siblings and being able to livestream our sessions. That was not able to work in the idea of community and being able to work together at the table, but we are happy that we are at least able to audio-record so that our members that are dedicated and hardworking in their buildings and cannot be missed from their buildings to be able to sit in our sessions and learn will be able to follow up and learn and listen and be advocates in the contracts of their jobs and what they do for our community. We hope that classified, please, keep paying attention, keep trying to listen, answer our surveys, send us information that you need us to know at the table. And we continue to promise to advocate as well as we can, and we ask the district to please continue to keep those ears open, those eyes open, and willing to meet with us and hear what we have to say. Because one thing about our classified staff, we have over 140 positions with more than eight calendars of people that we need to try to meet in one contract. It's a big undertaking for everyone at the table, so please continue to work with us. And thank you for everyone asking questions. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirsty. Lindsay? Welcome.
Evening. Good evening, Superintendent Baldetis, Chair Perez, and members of the board, district leaders, and community members. My name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the President of the Beaverton Education Association. Last Thursday, BEA members ratified the tentative agreement that we worked on for 11 and a half months. This new contract has a lot of progress for educators and students. We have language outlining the most transparent process for staffing models that we've ever had, ensuring that educators have input on class size and caseloads. We now have language ensuring a standardized system for recording student behaviors, allowing us to identify trends and individual needs so we can intentionally and effectively support our students. We also have language ensuring prompt communication about mitigation efforts in cases of buildings with extreme temperatures, no water, or no electricity, making sure educators and by proxy, students and families know what's going on. These wins are all non-monetary. Our team worked diligently to let the district know about the many cost-free issues that would move us forward in this contract and our wins for our educational community. And as a result, this contract is a net positive. I don't think it'll be a surprise to anyone here that we still have many unmet needs that directly impact our students and educators. Our students deserve more and our educators deserve more, period. Like Kirsty said, our OSEA colleagues are starting their bargain at the end of this month, and BEA will be coming back to the table in about a month and a half to bargain a contract for our licensed substitute educators. We stand in solidarity with workers in general because every worker deserves a living wage. Every educator and student deserves a safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment and our great schools. And I know that we will all hear the same message repeatedly from management. We just can't afford what you're asking for. Y'all, we can disagree about the priorities for spending in BSD, but I think we can all agree that the state must do more to address student needs. Oregon schools have been underfunded and our students and families have gone underserved for generations. We are turning our attention to our legislators in Salem to ensure that they know that we are continually, continually trying to give our students the very best experience in schools in a system that just does not provide the resources educators need to do that. So this is a call to action. To y'all, to y'all, to y'all. It's to everybody. We all need to unite to secure a funding model in Oregon that allows us to create and maintain the schools that our students deserve. And finally, tonight, I want to highlight a resolution that the BEA Representative Assembly adopted last week in support of LGBTQ+ rights. We very much appreciate the efforts of the board to support immigrant students and families in your resolution last month, and I have to say, I'm looking forward to hearing about more concrete efforts to support those students as we're also fielding questions that we don't know the answers to. So in our resolution, we also wanted to lift up the LGBTQ+ community who is under attack by the current federal administration. In our adopted resolution, which I sent copies to you earlier, we insist that the Beaverton School District publicly support the right of all individuals to safe, inclusive, and welcoming learning environments free of bullying and harassment, including LGBTQ+ students and staff, and celebrate the diversity of all students and staff, and that BSD reaffirm, strengthen, and enforce anti-bullying and anti-harassment policies, including protections for LGBTQ+ students and staff to ensure their safety and recognition of their rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. We'll now move to comments from community members. It's now time to hear comments from our community members. As a reminder, this is a time when members of the public can comment to the board, and the board will be actively listening, but will not be able to respond or answer any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes public comments virtually or in person for up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting, and when more than 10 people request to speak, priority is given to students, district residents, speakers who have not already provided public comment during recent meetings, and a variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing. Today, we received three requests to provide public comments, all in person, and the three speakers will be Jessica Pierce, Jenna Sells, and Talia Sanders. Only the people I named are allowed to speak, and each speaker will have up to two minutes to share their thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person, and we have a timer on the screen. When your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned off if that were not to occur. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. This means that we will end your testimony if you name a staff member, board member, or committee member by name in your testimony. Personnel matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly with the employee, their supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior. Remember that we have students as well as staff and community here in person and watching online. Our first speaker is Jessica Pierce. Jessica, please come on up to the front and table and take a seat. You can use any of those microphones and just press the button for it to be green. And then Jenna Sells, you'll be the next speaker after Jessica.
My name is Jessica Pierce. I identify as a white, neurodiverse, queer, cis woman, and use she/her pronouns. I'm a BSD parent and staff member. In the last three weeks, with the barrage of attacks on human rights happening under the current fascist regime, I have received zero human rights. the current fascist regime, I have received zero human rights-affirming communication from the BSD as a parent and minimal communication as staff. Our community deserves better in words and actions that make clear the strategic plan, board resolutions, and the district's stated values of belonging, dignity, and community connections are more than PR statements. In your public positions, you have a moral responsibility to speak up and stand up for the human rights of students, families, and staff. These attacks are not theoretical and they are not daily distractions, which was a phrase in a Friday Thoughts email to staff on 1/31. Deportation and breaking apart families, disappearance of Black and Indigenous history, demonizing trans and queer folks, normalizing antisemitism and Islamophobia, threats to folks with disabilities, these attacks are real and relentless and need to be called out for what they are, attempts to dehumanize and disenfranchise entire groups of people, and to double down on white supremacy. In response, you need to take every opportunity to make clear the board and management see and reject this dismantling of human rights. We need ongoing communication and actions that uplift the beauty and vibrancy of immigrant, Black, Indigenous, trans, queer, Jewish, Muslim, and disabled children and families and staff. We need you to train, resource, and empower staff, families, and students across the district to live out our commitment to the humanity all those fascism wants to dehumanize. We need every email, meeting, parent square message, family event, classroom, and building to affirm, honor, and protect the human rights and dignity of those under attack. Staying quiet, appeasement, half-measures are unacceptable. As Paulo Freire writes, "There's no such thing as a neutral education. Education either functions as an instrument to bring about conformity or freedom." I call on you to make it known.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next speaker is Jenna Sells, and then followed by Talia. And you can just press the button on the microphone to turn green, and you can start when you're ready.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you so much for negotiating with BEA so I didn't have to rally the troops tonight. And I really want to acknowledge your continuing negotiation with OSEA and just recognize that these roles are really significant. I do a lot of volunteer work in the schools, and I see these people working so hard, and they work hand-in-hand with our teachers, so they need to be equally supported. I've learned a lot since I was here last. I was joking at the beginning of the board meeting last time, I was like, maybe I should run for one of these positions, and by the end I was like, oh, dear God, thank you so much for all of you guys. I appreciate all that you do. Also, I just want to echo everything that was said before, and that it is a crying month, and there is so much going on, and the executive orders have directly impacted me and my work, and I can't, you guys just, you have a firing squad, you have actions to take right now, so I just really want to recognize all that you have going on, and as well as, you know, we must do more. I graduated from Sunset, I went to Cedar Park. These schools are not what they used to be, and I want to bring them back. I know that there is a lot of community involvement that's going to be needed and a lot of partnership. And I just really want to just back up what was said before, we just really need to keep fighting for our children. I mean, they're going to be the ones that are raising us in our older years, so we better be fighting for the best future for all of us. So, thank you so much for all that you're doing, and continue to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. Talia Sanders, you can go next. And you can start when you're ready.
Hi. Am I on? Hi, my name is Talia Sanders, and I have a current Whitford Suma 7th grader, and I just signed our younger son up for Suma at Whitford for next year. I emailed many of you earlier today, and I really appreciate the responses I've gotten so far, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to come talk tonight, so thank you. So Suma at Whitford Middle School is dramatically overcrowded. I've learned that it's forecasted that the incoming 6th grade will have 45 students in it next year. There are currently about 45 students in the 6th and 8th grades now, and it's a mess. So, the students are piled into classrooms like clown cars. Teachers, students, parents, and the principal all say it's terrible. One current 8th grade family called it a circus. Another 8th grade parent was actually told by district Suma staff to switch out of Suma into mainstream Whitford if they wanted to have smaller classes for their students to, they were told to, you know, deny their child academic opportunities so he could fit in a classroom. Suma teachers tell me it's untenable with that many students, and the district isn't listening to them. The principal told me he's asked for changes for the last couple of years, and our classes are still huge. Forty-five students in core classes would not be acceptable in any other situation. Why should it be okay for Suma? It's not, and I really hope you'll make changes and adjustments for next year. A couple of possible ideas are maybe shift where the Suma students go. I've heard that Meadow Park Suma classes have only 25 students in them, and Whitford has 45. Maybe there could be some shifts of the school assignments. There could be bonus to that, there, it's messy feeders into high school, and that could help clean up the feeders and the friendships that would follow the students. Maybe there's a way to break class into two sections and not mix, while not mixing grade levels. I bet there are way more creative solutions out there. I just ask that you don't let busing issues hold us back from appropriate-sized classes. So I know you hear many complicated and long-term.
Thank you, and you can send us the rest of your comments if you didn't get to finish, just email it to us, we'll read them. Thank you, Talia. Thank you for your comments. We'll now move on to our agenda, items for information. Our first item for information tonight is a spotlight on dual-language expansion with Dr. Perla Rodriguez and Toshiko Mauricio. You can start when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Perez, Superintendent Valderas, board members, and student representatives. My name is Perla Rodriguez. I am one of your district's executive administrators, and I have with me today.
I'm Toshiko Mauricio, administrator for multilingual programs.
And we are so excited to come and share what we are calling Phase 3 of Dual Language Expansion. So, I will begin by tying our presentation to our district's strategic plan goals. Specifically, dual-language and the continued expansion of dual-language is hitting all of these core areas, beginning with the foundations of success, progress on standards, and then of course, having our students leave our high schools truly college and career-ready in multiple languages. We keep our equity lens at the center of all of our work, and dual-language is a perfect example of an educational practice that is truly closing access, opportunity, and expectation gaps. As we've continued to talk about the day that any incoming kindergarten student in our district can select to be part of a dual-language program, we've spoken so much about access and access, and how do we know that we will get to a point where our kids and our families will have a choice about leaving our schools as multilingual young adults? To that end, we have Dual Language Phase 3, which will launch next fall. Next year, we are not going to add a dual-language program in a new school, and next year, we will not add a third language. As you know, we have dual-language English and Spanish, and dual-language English and Chinese Mandarin. A third language will not be added yet, not yet. Our focus does continue to be this idea of increasing access to dual-language programs via transportation for hub schools to schools that have current programs.
So I'm going to talk about our current programs and how we're going to do just that, expanding access. So Allo Huber Park is one of our existing dual-language programs, serving students in kinder, pre-kindergarten actually, till 8th grade. And so for next year, we are hoping to add another dual-language class at 3rd grade. So they will be, right now, they are serving, they have two dual-language sections at 3rd grade, and then three English sections, so for next year, it will be 3 and 2, just flipped. And the exciting part is that we will be able to offer students at Arrow Hassel and Chehalis the opportunity to attend Allo Huber Park if they choose this with transportation provided. I just want to shout out to Craig Beaver and his team for working really closely with us to be able to provide transportation to our students as we're creating these hubs, hub schools. So that's the first school. And then Hazeldale, as you know, this is our first year as a dual-language school, serving students in kindergarten, so next year they will roll up to 1st grade. And we created a hub with Hazeldale by adding Kineman as a school that will feed into Hazeldale if the students choose that option. And again, transportation will be provided to students at Kineman to attend Hazeldale. Dr. Perla here mentioned Mandarin Chinese as our second language that we added for dual-language, and that is at Jacob Wismar, so they started with kindergarten this year. They will roll up to 1st grade next year, and the exciting part is that we will be able to add Sato and Springville with transportation provided to Jacob Wismar for next year.
And I think that's your next slide, too.
We also have McKinley started this year with pre-K dual-language, and they will roll up to kindergarten next year. They will serve their own boundary. And then William Walker has been a dual-language program. This is their 2nd year. They will roll up to Grade 2. So we do have a visual here, and we tried to, we wanted to show you just the map of how we're really trying to expand access from the north to the south end of the school, as well as central, part using our existing schools. So the blue area there is your Jacob Wismar hub, serving Sato and Springville, then your purple is your Barnes hub, so Barnes will continue to be a regional hub, serving Beaver Acres and Almonica students. Then your orange there hub is your Allo Huber Park, and then Hazeldale hub is your red there, and then we have all the black areas there with dual-language elementary schools. So we still have Vos, McKinley, and William Walker will serve its own boundary.
Yeah, so as we roll out Phase 3, once the phase is implemented, we will have ensured that the top 10 elementary schools in terms of the number of Spanish-speaking English learners have district-provided access to dual-language. We have our clear next steps. Right now, we are working closely with the dual-language schools that are involved in Phase 3, doing work with their office assistants so that as we start registering our kindergarten students, it's very seamless that parents understand the options that they have if they are interested in dual-language. We're also continuing to just make sure that we are focused on professional development and having the just highest-quality instruction in our dual-language programs. And as always, we work closely with our partners in HR around recruiting and retaining multilingual staff. We know that having multilingual educators is a practice that faces, looks right in the face of equity, not just for dual-language. Having bilingual adults around our children is good for all of our children. So that's a goal that we continue to work on with our HR partners. Are there any?
Any questions that you all might have?
Sunita?
Thank you for your work that you guys are doing. I had asked a question about dual, not dual-language, world language or any language other than English being taught in Flex Online, to make it more accessible to students, and there is only one. So I have two questions. One is, what is your experience with having Spanish being taught as a Flex, on Flex Online from 6th through 12th grade? What's your experience on that? And my second question is, what will it take to have more languages be provided on Flex Online so that more kids can be accessible to their heritage languages and other languages? Thank you.
Yeah, so, and you can chime in, so for Flex, we have not necessarily built a whole world language sequence through Flex. We just haven't, we've been focusing a lot on in-person language instruction and building that way, and also through dual-language programs. So we haven't really investigated and expanded the language offerings.
So that was my first question. What is your experience with Spanish? Because Spanish is being offered as a world language. So our kids, what do you find that your experience has?
I mean, just like in any online program, you know, students are taking the language and learning through Flex. I think it's offered through an outside curriculum, not necessarily something that we've designed and we have worked through. And so we haven't, I mean, that's the experience, it's an online curriculum, and we don't have, we haven't built it out and designed out access points for other students to be able to, you know, have an online curriculum through Flex. Yeah.
I guess wondering on that would be, sorry, I didn't see if it began. Would be like, is a Spanish Flex Online more of a, when people are doing like credit recovery, is that how it's used now, or what is that, how is that? And you might not know the answer now, we can get it later, too, but like.
Yeah, we can get you the specifics of how, you know, how that's being used and the students that are going through that program and what kinds of credits they are offered. We can get you all of that information, as well as like how many students are actually taking the course, and do they complete it, and how many different proficiency levels there are within that course sequence. You know, because as you know, with language, you know, you want to have the variety of proficiency levels so that they can keep growing to become bilingual, even through an online course. So we can get all of that information to you, and all the data as well.
Thank you.
Ugana, and then Tammy?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. The question I have is that the percentage of the curriculum, is it 50/50?
Yeah, so for our Spanish and our Mandarin Chinese dual-language program, we run an 80/20 model. So in the earlier grades, like kindergarten for example, 80% of the time, they'll be learning Spanish, and then 20% of the time, they'll be learning curriculum in English. And when you go up to 1st grade, it'll be 70/30, 60/40, and then by 3rd to 5th grade, it really should be 50/50, which is kind of in line with research around biliteracy, to ensure that by the time students get to middle school and high school, they're really working towards bilingualism and being able to take, you know, the seal of biliteracy.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy?
Thank you. To follow on Sunita's question about world language, Dr. Valderas mentioned we're going to be adding a world language. Can you tell me how we decided on the one we chose? The last time I'd seen surveys, there were three languages kind of like more or less statistically tied and being requested by the community, so just how does that, how did that play out?
Yeah, so I, so we, a year and a half ago, we sent out a survey to students, to middle school and high school students, I don't know if you guys took that survey as well, and we basically asked students, what other languages do you want to see in high school? Because as we were exploring adding different languages, not just in dual-language, we were also hearing from the community that we wanted to have more languages offered through world language. And so we sent out the survey, we had about 2,500 students taking that survey, which was really awesome. And what came out of that survey was Korean was number one, with I believe 852 students asking for that language. Russian was around 600 and some students, and then we had Hindi and Arabic really, really close, around 560, I think by 551, so really close. And then the next language was Vietnamese with about 500. And then the next language was Vietnamese with about 300. So just those two languages were really, really close. Korean was obviously number one ask from our, from our student population.
So why are we not adding Korean as the world language?
So, so we have met with our Korean community, and they are very clear that they want dual language. There's difference between the world language and dual language. And then what we've heard from the community is that they are really interested in a dual-language program, starting kindergarten. And so that takes a lot of time to build, and, and to plan for, and definitely to implement. We've learned a lot through our Mandarin Chinese program, and so we know that it's a lot of work to add another language. And so that's the reason, the same thing with our Arabic community. We've met with Qul Islam, and they right now have the after-school program at Five Oaks, but they are also very clear that they would really, really want a dual-language program starting at the elementary level. With our Hindi community, we've met with them several times, and they've actually been supporting and helping us with the implementation. They're very clear that they want world language at the high school level, not necessarily a dual-language program. Many of our Hindi community is bilingual already, and so they, that's kind of what, we've been working with them and really responding to the needs and the, the requests of our community. Thank you.
Jessis?
Just a comment. One, thank you for this update, and I want to center just the voice of someone who has struggled, even though I took three years of French in high school, and I got good grades in all those years, I can't really speak any functional French that could help me, and who lives in a house with a partner and a father-in-law, who seem to be able to grasp additional languages with some sort of Peter Natural ability that I don't have. I think it's really beautiful that we have the options that we have, that we're trying to build these options. One, to sustain them, two, with input from rooted communities that, that hold those languages and those, those histories sacred. And I think it, it's important for the long, the long-term experience of our community that we have as many access to additional language, not just for the performative nature of being able to communicate for someone like myself, who maybe cannot in an additional language, but understanding that, that communication means we can bring multiple world, worldviews and understandings into everything that we're doing as people in the space that we share. So thank you for this work. Let's keep going, and also make sure we're well-informed, so we can make sure these programs are effective and responsive. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sunita?
I just want to thank the multilingual department for making sure that Hindi curriculum got set up. You know, it was a long time coming. It's the third most commonly spoken language in the world, and people from the community, they really, really supported it. You know, Arvind and Nish, Nisha, they, they really worked hard. So thank you, Toshiko, your team, and the community members.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. I feel really proud of our district and where we are now, from where we started in the last few years. I know we've had Spanish dual-language in just a few schools for like 30 years, you know, it feels like, and to now have the model of the hubs and expanding that way and looking at, as you described, working with the communities to see what other languages and, and what that might look like for other languages, right? I know last year, we met, Toshiko brought together eight different language groups in one setting when we were looking at the multilingual strategic plan for the state of Oregon, and every single group, language group was like, yes, this is important to us. And so for you to take that input and get it to where you are, and I, I thought it was beautiful how you expressed like the, how each community, from Tammy's question, you know, like how each community has had that input, fills my heart with joy, and look forward to hearing more about that, those different options, and then maybe even the increasing of heritage language courses for some of our students, too. But thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we'll go into our next item, which would be the superintendent's mid-year report review.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I know that we talked about this in the session prior to the board work session, the board regular board meeting here. So just highlight just some, this is a mid-year report, and some of the things that we're really proud of as a system is infusion of systems across the school districts. The multi-tiered systems of support are being rolled out in regards to currently the, the assessments that are being utilized in our, on our campuses, K through 12. The high-quality curriculum, really proud of the work that staff have done as well with the elementary K5 language arts adoption, and looking toward the secondary adoption as well for ELA. That's something that, it, it takes a lot of effort, and it is a costly resource, but something that our kids need. And you heard right now, just from staff, just a minute ago, our dual-language programs. So really proud of going from just a couple of schools that were dual-language, now that we keep, continue to expand out, and just have a phenomenal team that's doing that work. Dr. Cordy's team's working on CTE expansion in alignment with our community, to make sure that our kids are able to, that want to stay local and live local, can have a career here locally, that, that they can earn a living wage, because again, not every student wants to go to college nor needs to go to college anymore. So that's something that we're going to continue to expand on. And PK, our preschool program expansions, we expanded out to Raleigh Park this year, and when Raleigh Hills is completed, they'll also have a PK program that would have all title schools with PK program, for the first time in the memory of the system. We do have our board reps, that was another goal of the board, so we have board reps here, and look forward to hearing their comments shortly, a couple more maybe. We are on time and on budget with our facilities, so thank you to the facilities team, Beaverton High School. The Beaverton High School, as I'm often reminded, the legacy high school, and as well as Raleigh Hills, it's on time and on budget, as well as other, other opportunities such as seismic and security updates across our system. And the ERP, this is something that is not sexy. This is not something that people are going to jump up and down, say this is something that we, that people really excited in the community, because it's hard to understand, but it's, it is literally the backbone to our programs, in terms of our finance and human resources, is literally the backbone to how we pay our people, and it hasn't been refreshed for over 20, 25 years, 25 years. So it's something that we're going to continue to expand out, and it's going to take a few years for us to continue to do, two more years to get this work done, but it is the right work to, and people are going to see a difference when it gets fully implemented in terms of the efficiency. So excited about that. And also just our, our hiring, I know our wonderful HR department led by Susan Rodriguez is, our goal is to continue to work on, on diversification of the workforce, to be more reflective of the students that we serve. Overall, diversity for our staff are 25% right now, overall diversity of our staff. This year, 34%, 34% of the staff that we hired come from diverse backgrounds. So we're making headway. It is a large system, so it's hard to change that, but we're, we just got to stay at it and keep at it, and have that focus. So really appreciate the work that Susan, you and your department have done. So just some, some high-level remarks about the mid-year report.
Thank you. Next is our department report on transportation. Do you want a little break? Yeah, yeah. So it's 8:23, you think five minutes? Okay, we'll come back at 8:28. Thank you.
Portable generators, basically a 500 kilowatt generator. It's the size of a 20-foot ocean container. That gives you an idea how big this is. We can bring it in and plug it into the about half of the chargers to keep them going if we ever ran into an extended blackout period. So all those not lost if the power goes out. When we finally do acquire the rest of our buses this year in the beginning of '26, that will put us in the largest, the top three largest school district operations in the nation. Boston Public has the largest and Montgomery County in Maryland is number two. And that'll put us at number three with just about 100 buses. So a lot, a lot going on there. We continue to act as a resource for other districts. We do this through a monthly video meeting with, it started off with region 10 of the EPA, which is Washington, Oregon, Idaho, and Alaska EPA funding recipients. And that has since grown to across the nation. We have folks that come on from us from Michigan, Illinois, Minnesota, Texas, and where they're, you know, they're bringing their electrification projects in and discussing it. It's a back and forth discussion that, that I lead every month with them and with people. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. We've hosted technical training for, or technical training for repair technicians on several occasions. We've hosted ride and drive events with our partners, Fourth Mobility Equity Based Nonprofit, where we've brought in folks, we've had you folks out for rides. And we've also present, we continue to present at national electric vehicle conferences. I'm scheduled to present it to this coming year. And I think I did three last year. So we continue to get the word out there for Beaverton and, and act as a resource. Grant funding was a big thing. Everybody knows, you know, things are, things are going on right now at the federal level and we, we await the results of that. But on a more local note, we are, we've already got about $2 million in funding from PGE through four grants over the course of four years. We're awaiting the fifth grant. We've applied for another 442,000 for three more buses through PGE. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to be awarded for that. And then we're also, we've also, the DEQ is awarded through the Clean Heavy Duty Vehicle Grant. This is not just limited to school buses, but to heavy duty vehicles. They were awarded about $4 million from the EPA, about $1.9 million of that belongs to us for 10 more buses. They've been actually awarded the money, they're working up their contracts. So once we get their contract, hopefully by the end of the month, then we'll be able to proceed with another 10 buses that are funded, over 50% of which are funded through the federal government via the DEQ. So we're pretty excited about that. And the report goes into the kind of money that we spent, as you saw, that most of the money we spent has been grant money, not loan money, not general fund money. And any BSD money we spent has come from the school, state school fund for reimbursement for school buses. So we have not, from a bus purchase point of view, we haven't really, we haven't touched the general fund at all. And the last thing is staffing and a couple of notes. So everything, and this is where I have some documentation I'll be sending you under a separate memo that you can see a little bit more, but everything that Dr. Baldair has just referred to with, with respect to expanding the educational programs, transportation has a hand in every one of those. You heard the presentation from the dual language folks, and as you heard repeatedly, we have a, we have a big presence in all that. So we're at our highest right now. We've hired 46 employees so far this year. We have another 11 that are currently in training. We have about 250 drivers, which is our all time high. But some would say in light of budgeting and things like that, you know, with the declining enrollment, how come we're not cutting back on drivers? And what we would posit is that in fact, our responsibilities will grow with a declining, declining enrollment. With the additional programs, and I'll give you an idea, just again, high level, some of the things we're involved in. And then with boundary adjustments and things like that in the future that may or may not come. And if there's any consolidation, you know, we still, you know, we're still involved in that. In fact, more so because we'll have to drive further to bring kids from a further direction. Even if we have, you know, even if we lost, you know, even if we had a 5% reduction in, in enrollment, the bus still needs to roll because instead of 80 kids on the bus, now there's only 78 kids on the bus. So we still have to roll the bus to bring the kids in. But to give you an idea, some of the things we've done with that staffing level, we've cut, this year, we've cut our cab services by 85%. And again, a lot of this went into the details as far as the numbers are pretty outstanding. But, and we've cut our charger services by almost 80%. We're doing all that in-house with our own drivers now at considerably less cost. DLL, the dual language program, we've grown from one to six schools, as we've talked about. Four of them in the coming year will be, as you heard, bringing in from out of boundary kids. So that's, we're going to places out of the boundary, bring those kids in. So that's additional demand for services. Our after-school buses for middle school and elementary school, that, that involves 38 buses right now, just for the after-school programs. A massive expansion in middle school after-school programs this year. Beaverton Early Childhood Buses, believe it or not, we use 88 buses for preschool kids for the Beaver, Beaverton Early Childhood Program. That's what's involved with it. CTE, just for the Aloha Beaverton, Merlot Station in Westview, that's 37 buses back and forth, Monday through Friday for those kids. And then the busing, the direct busing for those kids that we started this year, that is 44 buses that we use over the course of a week doing that. And then we're going to have some new expansions next year or in the following years. 25, 26 Sunset will have a new CTE program and 26, 27 DHS will have a, a new program as well. So again, those are going to draw from all over, we expect, and those are, you know, district-wide programs that we're supplying transportation for. Just a couple other things and then we'll open it for questions to give you an idea. Just math and SUMA, that's 12 buses for a middle school math and SUMA programs that we operate with. Our options, which we choose, we're the only district that we, I think anybody know, that we know of that offers transportation for our options programs, just for the AM routes to bring kids in, is 35 buses. And for those shuttle buses to take kids between the transfer sites and to take kids back from the high schools back to their home schools, that's 60 buses that, that we use. So you can see the numbers are just massive. I mean, we are, we're transporting 26,000 kids a day. The numbers are pretty massive. And then I'll leave you this, McKenney-Vento or homeless and at risk students has just increased massively over the course of two years. Last year and this year, the numbers are very, very close. We've had, just our, our little department has 513 requests for transportation and we're busing right now 326 kids, McKenney-Vento kids, and we use 108 different routes to do that. That's part of that 85% reduction in cab fares that cost us $400,000 in the past. Now we're doing it for literally one-tenth of that, about $40,000 is what we're expected to spend all year on that. And to give you just a couple of places, we go as far as Multnomah Falls, Fairview, King City, Forest Grove, North Plains. We did have some students living up in Rainier that we took a school bus up to and back, but they've since been brought in. So not just McKenney-Vento, but also we have placements from the Department of DHS that we're responsible for as well, so some things. So just kind of give you a flavor, why, you know, why do we still have the same amount of buses is because we drive a long way. We drive over 3 million miles a year. When I started here 10 years ago, you know, we were at about 2.5 million and now we're well over about 3.1. We'll probably hit 3.2 million this year, just in 10 years. That's a pretty significant increase considering a year, almost a year that was pandemic, we didn't go anywhere. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Melissa and then Susan.
Thank you, Craig. Really appreciate, really appreciate the presentation and the information. And my kids go to neighborhood schools and they use midday CTE programs and there's an option bus. So in our week, we get to experience a lot of BSD transportation and appreciate it all. And my, I don't have a question, it's more of a comment of the pride of being able to offer so many variety of options for our students. And we don't let transportation be the thing that prevents them from accessing it. So it's a very complex network and web that you all orchestrate and choreograph and we're very grateful for it. So thank you.
I echo that. We take great pride in not being the cog that holds everything up. We, we just want to say yes.
Susan?
Craig, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate all you do, what your team does for our students. I especially liked hearing about the McKenney-Vento students and how we make sure they get to where they need to go. I am so proud of our school district for that. So thank you so much for making that happen. I think that is huge. I do have a question about how much you, we're reducing our carbon footprint by using 43 electric buses. And I, I think I also wasn't quite sure total amount of buses we have and what's the percentage of electric buses currently and what we're anticipating.
Okay, so we have about 320 total buses. Right now, 43 are electric, but our plan will be, once we receive everything, we'll have about 100 electric. We have just purchased 10 more propane. Our plan is to get to about 125 propane and the remaining 140-ish will still be diesel. And the reason for that is most of those, for long trips, basically for trips, 600 miles on a diesel, nothing, nothing will come close to it. That being said, we run renewable diesel, so it's again, a non-petroleum. As far as the, we actually measure the amount of metric tons that we've eliminated. It's on our website under the environmental things. We're not, we're, we've cut down, I think we've, we've reduced about 26,000 gallons of diesel fuel this year so far as of January that we're not using, we've replaced with electric. And I want to say that's about 4,000 metric tons year-to-date of CO2 that we have prevented from going in the atmosphere. Again, the hard numbers in a lot of those metrics are on our website under the environmental efforts and easily see, so.
So I just have one more comment because when you talk about climate change and especially with our youth and, you know, how concerned we are for the future of our, not just our country, but our world. And to, to, to know that we are the third largest school district with electric buses, I just also want to commend the effort of you, your team and our school district to make that a priority because, I mean, I know we're Beaverton, but to be the third in the nation is pretty, pretty cool. So thank you.
Thank you. And we couldn't do it without your support, believe me. It all starts with you, Dr. Baldairis and the leadership. It all starts at the very top and we are just instruments of your will.
We'll go Tammy, Ugana and then Sunita.
Just real quick, if you, if you have a chance to look, those are, there is a website and I believe right on there is tons of CO2 right at the top in the bar chart and there's a number of things there. I'm sorry.
Craig, thank you also. And I just want to say this again, mostly for others to hear, but also just to have it hammered in my brain a little bit more. No money from the general fund is going to buy these electric buses. As we're heading into, you know, uncertain times, I can feel really comfortable talking to the community and we can look at these beautiful, brand-new electric buses and know that it isn't at the price of, you know, three teachers from our classroom. So I just want to say that again, super impressed with the funding. I don't know how you pieced that all together, but if my reading of it's accurate, none of that is coming from the general fund and I just want to say bravo.
Grant funding, state school bus reimbursement, state school fund reimbursement and generous bond funding as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, thank you for your presentation. So from my understanding, we are retaining some of our diesel-powered buses for long trips. But I also see that you, that the plan is to eliminate our special ed diesel buses. So all our special ed buses are going to be electric buses going forward, is that from 2027?
Electric and propane. So it'll be zero emission or low emission, so electric or propane. But by fall of '26, so not this coming fall, the next fall, there will be no more special needs diesel buses.
Okay, that's nice. So are we, how are we eliminating them? Are we selling them or we crush them?
For the electric buses, we're required to crush them. So we, and we do get revenue, a little bit of revenue back from the, from the scrap dealer for that, by the way. So we're crushing about 70 buses and we've, we've been doing that. And then for the ones that we're replacing with propane, we will put those on auction. And again, depends, the engines are in good shape. I mean, and it just depends what the demand is out there. For a while, people were converting a certain type of bus into their own motor homes. So we'll see. We, we haven't sold buses in several years because we've been crushing things left and right, but we're, we've pretty much gotten rid of everything that we have to by now.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Sunita and then Justice.
Thanks for your presentation. My question, one, one is a clarification question. You said that we use the buses for after-school programs. Is that from option schools to after-school programs? Is that what that is?
No, these, these are the actual middle school and elementary school after-school programs. You asked about after-school programs, right? Yeah, these are actual middle school and elementary school after-school programs. Wide variety, and I have to be honest with you, I can't tell you what everyone is. I know that through some generous funding this year, we've been able to offer after-school programs at every single middle school. Prior to that, it was only, I think, less than half. So eight middle schools now for a variety of things. Some of it's curricular, some of it's, some of it is educational, some of it's a combination of both. So I, my colleagues could probably, I can get you that information.
This must be new, right?
The middle school is new this year, the additional middle school, that was a big leap this year, yes.
So they'll take from school to the after-school program?
No, they're usually, the middle schools are at, they're at the school they're at. What we do though is we take the students home after school, right? So when they get out, say at 5:30, we, we, you know, we have a, a customized routes depending on who's riding to go drop them off.
And what does your capacity looks like? Like, would you ever consider providing this service for high school students?
The problem with high school, and we've actually done that a few years ago, we tried to do that. The problem with high school is that it's still, by the time we do that, we're still in the middle of middle school, right? Between ending up middle school tra, home-to-school transportation and middle school after-school. But the biggest thing we did, we had activity buses like a few years ago that we tried at every high school. Ridership was very, very low because of, you know, we, we couldn't, different practices get out at different times and we couldn't do it till about 5, 4:45 to 5 o'clock, which was the first time we had buses available. And by then, practice was over and not very many students wanted to wait around for a school bus. But never say never, right? So.
And so one more question. What does your, you know, when you take a student from outside their
Boundary.
Boundary, does that put a lot of strain on your timing or do you guys have capacity to do that? Like today, one of the parent was talking about SUMA school, that they have so many, can they take some from their school to another school? What does that look like for you guys?
It can be very, it can be very stressful. For example, if we have a student that lives, say, down in the mountainside area and they're going to assume a program, let's say at Whitford or Cedar Park, we have to pick them up early, usually first. It's a small, I mean, we use a bus with probably, it may only have six or eight kids on it because he's making a lot of stops, doing a lot of miles to get all the kids at these outlying places. Because the problem is it's one here and one there and one there. And so, yeah, the rides typically are longer, both in the morning and the afternoon. In the afternoon, we tend to put those kids that live in those outlying areas on the, on the back end of a regular home-to-school route. So they do the regular route in Boundary first and then go out. So some of those kids are on the bus for, you know, 50 minutes and really extreme cases up to an hour. So, yeah, it does, it does put a strain on it. And again, if we have a child, we need a bus, basically. So even if it's two kids, we need to put a bus there. And that puts a strain for a driver and all the costs associated with that. So, yeah, but we're happy to do it, to make it work. We have made it work. And the more things expand, the more, you know, we're able to look for economies. We're looking at SUMA and Rachel Carson doing some things a little bit differently the coming year. It'll, it'll improve the ride times for the students. It'll certainly help us operationally. So we're, we're really, we're looking forward to that for the coming year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Justice?
Well, thank you again. I appreciate these updates on the, to give really a scale to what's needed to move 26,000 young people around so they can get education, get to their education, their space of learning. I, and I'll share a little bit later in our comment section, engaging with another colleague from another part of the state about their transition challenges in a much more rural district, right? Which were much more about just broad, wide distances. I shared with them that, you know, even though we have a public transportation system that maps in our district, it is not sufficient to get kids where they need to go at any appreciable scale. People at TriMet, please don't have your feelings hurt, you'll be all right. And so I appreciate, you know, the detail and the time that we put into this and the work that's put into, to try to make this go, but also knowing, and, and I would please ask if there's anything that we as board members and advocates in a broader sense can message to the broader world. sense, can message, uh, to the broader world around how we can make better decisions at the other scales around, uh, transportation, to make, uh, so we could be more directed and effective with those that need it most within our district, where we can share the load for other things with the rest of us as a community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support, we greatly appreciate it. We have a fantastic team of folks, and none of us possible without them.
I just wanted to say thank you to our two-hundred-and-sixty bus drivers, fifteen repair folks, and your thirty other staff that helped implement what you just described, um, for us, for our twenty-five thousand students. Um, it's an incredible puzzle that you, um, have created, been able to, you know, figure out, and it fills my heart to know, um, I, as we talk to different, um, um, folks from the instruction department, how you've actually, like, you're in there with them planning these expansions, you're in there with all, every step of the way, to be able to get, like you were just saying, to a yes. And that hasn't always been, like, I remember, oh, we can't do that, we can't do this, and now we're like, yes, this, how do we get to a yes? So I appreciate that. Um, and thank you to our drivers, repair folks, and our staff that make it happen, so thank you.
Yes, they are the stars, they absolutely are. Thank you very much.
Um, we'll have the financial update now, up next.
Okay, good evening, Board, here we are again, another month down. Um, I have all of the usual suspects in terms of your financial report, you've got all the reports you get on a monthly basis. I'll be fairly brief in my comments tonight. There is no change to the general fund forecast for this month. Uh, obviously anticipating approval of contract tonight, we will have changes coming down the road. We'll work to incorporate those in the upcoming months, and you'll start to see those numbers ripple through in terms of, uh, impacts on, on, on the general fund. Um, just a heads up, excuse me, the budget listing and learning video is out. Uh, we have currently set a target, saying next year, we're trying to identify about ten million dollars in reductions, given that we're anticipating running a thirty-million-dollar deficit. Uh, good news is, reserves help with that, so instead of having to cut that full thirty, we're targeting a smaller number. Uh, we can also help that by encouraging our legislators to take a look at school funding in terms of, yes, we've, we've got, uh, that original burst of current service level that's helped us, but how do we, how do we deal with other things, those other costs? The special education costs that, that, that we're not getting reimbursement for, those kinds of things. So continued advocacy on your part there will be important. Um, we are also looking for the co-chairs' budget framework, that typically comes out sometime later this month, first part of March. That will be our next kind of instruction, and it, that will be instructive to us, to say, all right, here's where the governor was, where's the legislature going to be in terms of their opening, uh, stance on the state school fund? So we'll be watching that closely, and we will do, uh, Budget 101 next month.
Any questions? Uh, Sunita?
Uh, just a quick question, do you have a, kind of a sense when we can get to see what that ten million budget cut, where it's going to be?
So when that'll actually happen, just from a, a progress and sequence, we'll do Bu, Budget 101 in March, where we'll kind of update the Budget Committee and say, here's where we're at. And somewhere between that meeting in March, and when we propose the budget in May, we'll, we'll have the recommended, uh, reductions at that point.
All thirty million?
Uh, hopefully not thirty.
Well, twenties come for reserves, but we, we, that's only one time, right? So we still need to know what, where it's.
Correct, correct. Yep, we'll lay all that out between the months of, uh, March and May.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, our next part is our, um, topic that we added to the agenda tonight. Um, information about the district's response to concerns about federal changes and immigration enforcement. Um, I'm going to hand off to Dr. Baldaros, and then they get it started.
Yeah, so have Shelley and Camille come up, and, uh, if they could, and Shelley's taking the lead on this in the district, and, uh, actually in the state, if I were to say, she's one of the leads in the state, working with the department, and also a variety of other agencies to, uh, help support other districts that don't have the capacity nor the expertise, so turn it over to the staff.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chair Perez and Board of Directors. This is going to be a summation of activities that we have had for the last three weeks. I just want to put an exclamation point on that it may have felt like a lot longer period of time. We have had three weeks to make adjustments to the way that we talk about and, uh, support very publicly our students. And I also want to emphasize some of the things you're going to hear this evening, you've heard many times before, because what you're going to hear is some things that aren't new, but things that have been curated through this lens of supporting our immigrant and refugee families. Things that this board has put in place for a number of years, things that this staff has done long before I arrived in Beaverton, things that have been our guardrails in supporting all of our students and families. But tonight, I'm going to share with you, along with Camelia, the activities that we have had over the past number of weeks, again, through this very specific lens. I'm going to anchor us in our equity belief, the straight-from our policy, who we are as a community, and part of our deepest core values. The commitment to each one of our learners and the success of each student, that their experiences and their outcomes will not be predicted based on any of these factors here. And you're going to notice, right there in the center, is immigration status. This is something that has been in place as part of the connective tissue that holds Beaverton together, our strongest sense of belonging, holding all of our students and lifting them up, and particularly through this lens this evening, we're going to be talking about our students, um, who may feel additional levels of vulnerability, or family members, or even staff, who may feel additional levels of vulnerability based off of immigration status of their own, uh, loved ones, or family members. So before I go into more detail, I want to be able to share, what I'm sharing with you now is not something that I created in the last twenty minutes. Uh, I happen to be giving a presentation to our multilingual department tomorrow morning, and so I pulled slides from there, and then added a little bit more information. So what you're going to be seeing is real-time, what many of our staff across the district have seen. And you'll see those areas of focus. Knowing and sharing knowledge of BSD's policies and practices. Cultural awareness and culturally-relevant instructional practices, part of our core of how we serve every single student in our school district. You heard me two weeks ago, in our board work session, talk about those ten culturally-relevant instructional practices. So much of that is going to be rooted in what you're going to hear this evening. Safe and welcoming schools and classrooms as a foundation. And social-emotional well-being and trauma-informed practices, that as we move through this, knowing that each person is impacted by this differently. Each person walks home and is impacted by the world differently, and it is our responsibility to be able to respond in kind, and knowing that a trauma-informed approach, that love and care, and that wraparound, is what is going to be best for us, to be able to create that safe and welcoming school and classroom environment. And then lastly, providing support for language, education, community resources, and basic needs as appropriate for our students and families and staff, who may feel additional vulnerability at this time. So I want to just give a quick rundown of some of the activities that a small team, and I have been doing together, a small team, including several of the people that you know from teaching and learning, including both Toshiko and, uh, Perla, who were presenting earlier, certainly Camelia, Shelley Bailey Shaw, and Tatiana Cevallos as well. We started prior to January, working together to say, you know, we should be prepared. Let's talk about the way that Beaverton has come together, both in the past, and the way that we are holding our policies together now. Let's bring those to light, let's refresh people's memories, let's talk to every single one of our administrators, our classified supervisor administrators, as well as our building leaders. Everybody has a piece of this. We all support our entire community. So that is exactly what we did. Our first group that both Camelia and I trained was in early January, where we had every one of our administrators together, walking them through this, and then giving them the information, how we need you to go back to your work sites. Share this with your staff, share this with your teachers, share this with your teams. There should be widely-spread knowledge about all that we're sharing, because zero of it is secret. Zero of it is secret. And so we have had a plan to share in multiple cascading ways the information, recognizing that not everybody gets the email, not everybody reads the parent-square message, not everybody might be present for that one time that that one staff thing was said, that one meeting. So we have to have ways that we're hitting this communication in multiple ways. So you're going to hear about that as well this evening. Staff also receive information that they were to send home to families in their newsletters as another way. We have provided through the OEI newsletter for two months in a row, additional information that is available to every single staff member and every person with a BSD email, and it is also available to anyone in our community to be able to read as well. So a great deal of information there. Additionally, all staff receive that, so every, uh, staff member, and on top of that, through the teaching and learning newsletter, and through our principals, that's another way that both principals and every instructional staff member are receiving that information. And that comes out weekly. In addition to that, we have trained, uh, all but two office professional groups. One group gets training this week, and the last group gets training next week. Beyond that, I have worked directly with our social workers on several components of this. We have worked with school sites, one-on-one, when they have asked for additional support. I've had the pleasure of speaking with our OSEA and BEA leadership. We worked on components of this with our edu, excuse me, our Equity Advisory Council, as well as having a session specifically for our Spanish-speaking parent pack. What you're going to see next, I'm going to go into a little bit more information on what I've been sharing with staff. So as we talk about this with staff, I talk about it in four corners. The first corner is law enforcement, and there's a little asterisk there that I'll refer to in just a few moments. The next one is policy, understanding deeply, and being able to articulate our policy. Our policy is the thing that really holds us together in Beaverton, it also helps define who we are, and shares what our values are. We have very specific enrollment processes in Beaverton School Districts. So as our staff receive a very complete set of information, enrollment is really important for them to know, especially as they're receiving families. And again, things that were not brand-new to us here. I remember working with Toshiko Mauricio, two, three years ago, prior to me joining Beaverton, on this component on enrollment. As Dr. Baldaros mentioned, we're networked across the state in multiple ways, and Toshiko and I have had, uh, several years' conversation on strengthening this process, so that is a component of it. And then also that last component, stage four, sharing of resources, and making sure that our staff is knowledgeable. Okay, this next one is going to be a little bit complex, and I'm going to ask that, um, you bear with me, and I will zoom in, and I will slow down, and we'll talk about it as much as I can. Uh, I will also make sure that you have a copy of this presentation, and you'll have links to all of it, so you can download, print, all of the things. So bear with me, the next part's a little bit teeny. What you're seeing here is an infographic. Oftentimes, one of the very first questions we will receive is, what happens when? Uh, law enforcement, again, asterisks, uh, inquires, or any outside agency for that matter, inquires about information of a student or a family. They come to school and say, I want this, I want this, or give me this. We actually have a process for that. These are our longstanding processes, again, with Camelia, cultivated through this lens of supporting our immigrant and refugee families, but this applies to every single student and family in the Beaverton School District. So this is for everyone. I appreciated what Perla said earlier, when we were talking about a focal population of students who are dual-language learners, and how, when we center there, and we hire diverse staff that meet their needs, it actually benefits the whole community. So when we centered here, on our students who are immigrant and refugee families, it's also another way to communicate that we are lifting up the entire school district, because every single one of these policies is there to support and nurture and keep safe every single one of our students, inclusive of their full identity. So I am going to, um, zoom in a little bit on mine, so I can read this to you a little bit better. When I mentioned the asterisk, external agencies, law enforcement is a very broad title. We have very specific relationships with our youth services officers here in the Beaverton School District. We also do not give them synergy access. They have magic machines that can do way more than our synergy can anyway, so there's no use, we're good there. And we also recognize that that is not who our families, and several of our students have been most concerned about. They've been more concerned about an outside agency that doesn't know them, that's coming to ask potentially about some very specific in, information. So we divided this into categories. So responding to requests for, to interview a student, there are very, very specific categories of when this can happen, very specific. And beyond that, it doesn't. So, for example, and our building principals are very fluid, and this is something that they're trained on, on a regular basis, if there is suspected child abuse in the home, domestic child abuse, that is a time when, uh, a DHS worker might come and say, I'd like to interview a student. And we actually have a process to verify, uh, who the person is, that they're with the state agency, et cetera, to interview the student. You'll see also that our policies that safeguard all of those practices are hot-linked right below. So I'm going to share with you in a few minutes where this is located on our website, so everyone in our community can also see that, so they can go directly to the policy. And then again, all of these components, when you're on our website, you can look at the, all of these within one's own personal home language. The next column is arrest and taking into custody. Our staff have been shared this information, this is consistent across the top. When a person comes into the office and is asking for information about a student, or says, I'm here to, I need this, or I need that person, et cetera, uh, we are instructed to take the person's information, check their identity, and then immediately contact the administrator. So this is where that component of first week of January, having training with every single one of our administrators, Camelia and I were able to talk through, what does this, uh, process look like, and shared specifically for them. When this is dealing specifically with an immigration and customs enforcement component, you're going to also notice, there's very specific language down here, that, uh, and our policies that also associate with it. Law enforcement must have a valid legal order, a warrant, a subpoena, et cetera. We are fortunate to have in-house counsel who can help us verify that. I can't do that, I've, I'm not familiar enough, so I'm grateful that we have, uh, a source of strength right here inside the district. Our principals all know, they have questions about any of this, they have people to call on a moment's notice to be able to get that answer immediately. The next col, column is search of a student. Very specific policies around this as well. Same thing, where we're talking about taking a person's contact information, verifying identity, and involving the administrator immediately. This does not happen without that warrant, it just doesn't. Request for personal, personally identifiable information, this is related to policy J O B. Prior written consent has to be provided by parents. It's part of our enrollment process. I believe it is page four of the enrollment process, as a matter of fact, and a parent needs to sign that they are okay with giving personally identifiable information, like, here's Shelley, she's on the soccer team, here's her name under the picture, or she was a part of this really cool robotics thing, and the news came and interviewed her, and her picture's in the Beaverton Times, and there's her name, those types of things. Parents can also opt out of that at any time, even beyond the first day of enrollment, simply by going to their office staff and saying, you know, I don't want my child's personally identifiable information, or, and their directory information shareable with anyone. And so there's a FERPA form that families can say, I'd like to, I'd like to undo that thing that I did at registration, no problem. That is right inside of our registrar's packets, they also have that information, and have been prepared, so that they know that they can provide that information to families, where families can make that choice. Requests for student records, quite similar, those are very similar to the identifiable information and directory. information and directory information. And there are yes, no components there, when it is okay and when it's not okay. Essentially, a parent must give permission, and unless there is a valid warrant, nobody's going to have that unless the parent has given permission. I just want to emphasize that one more time. And then the last column that you see there is surveillance of students. School staff do not assist any law enforcement agency with surveilling of our students. I know that we have cameras. We have a lot of safety and protective measures throughout our school district. And then persons who have a request can go through our legal counsel if they need to have interest in seeing something that is on tape. So I'm going to pause for a moment because this is a lot of complex information to digest, and just ask if there are any questions on what I've shared so far.
Susan?
Shelley, as you're presenting this, I think I have a particular concern about students who are not showing up at schools. And I just want to ensure that we're going to get there because, I mean, I know that we covered a lot of this already, so I would like to get to the more emergent, you know, concerns, because I hear tentatively that kids aren't showing up to school because they're afraid. And I also want to find out what protections we have for students that might find that their parents were picked up in a different location. I think that is actually more, and I'm not trying to dismiss anything you're going over right now. I would like to get to what we're concerned about right now.
I'm going to defer to Chair Perez. If you feel as though this is information that the majority or all of the board has already received, I'm happy to skip ahead.
I know that you had shared with this, with us before, but I'm happy listening to it because I think that that was kind of the question that people wanted to hear, and then we can come back to that.
I will make sure that we address that, because that is definitely part of what we, this is, this is about. Okay?
I think I saw a hand. Our students? No, oh.
Okay, let me just ask this.
Okay, Ugana, and then Tammy, and then Sunita.
Do we know of any families that have been detained currently?
No.
Okay. And are our students expected to show up at school with their passports or their birth certificates?
That is not an expectation of the Beaverton School District. I will definitely address that more. I've heard that as a concern from community members. And one of the things that I will share with you in just a couple slides are resources available for families. That legal advice and those preparedness kits are out there for folks to digest and say, what is my context? Because every family's story is different. My family's immigration story is different from maybe some of yours. I'm going to imagine so. And the way that my family processed immigration, some of these things definitely get our attention, and others, maybe they don't. So in terms of the resources for families, it is context-specific. And I will definitely address what are the resources for families, where they can read about all of those pieces and talk to people about those things as well. And they can make the determination on what is right for them. In terms of us in Beaverton, our registration process is pretty amazing. Having reviewed it a number of times for a variety of reasons this year, looking through and what we need for students, we know who our students are. We're very comfortable with the information that their parents provide us. We are also incredibly comfortable with this process that you see in front of you, that we're not handing kids to people who would therefore need to ask that information, because our parents have verified who they are and all of their things. And so depending on a parent's context, they might look at some of the resources and say, yeah, that one's for me, or nope, that one's not for me. So I definitely will go into that a little bit more.
I think it was Tammy, and then Sunita.
So I noticed this slide appeared sometime in the past week or so on this page, so thank you for adding it.
Actually, it's been there since January.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
That's okay.
I've noticed it. And it kind of looks to me like a slide that would be used by the front office staff to sort of like, this is, and I'm curious about the usefulness to families and community members who are wondering, I, what happens when ICE shows up? Like, looking at this, I think that what I'm hearing, again, it's sort of the same question over and over, just like, what happens when ICE shows up? And I guess even me reading this right now, it's not clear to me from any of these scenarios that, you know, ICE is asked to leave, or, you know, I, just like, what does it look like for the layperson? And this feels a little bit like directives, which we need, and I'm really grateful that our, that we have these. And for our community, what, you know, if they were maybe watching from the outside, they could say, oh, we saw the ICE van show up. They went, they knocked on the door, and then they left. And so I'm just wondering, and maybe I don't even know the words to say, like, Shelley, I know what they want on the website. They just want us to say X, Y, or Z. And I don't know if I know what the right words are. But I think this is, this is really helpful for the front office, and I think for our community. They want to know things like, our SROs will not cooperate with ICE. I've, I think Dr. Valderras shared, you know, Washington County Sheriff's Office has said, we will not cooperate with ICE. I don't know that I have heard that from the Beaverton Police Department. And so I know, I would like to hear that also in conjunction with this conversation. But, so I think for the communities that, folks in the community that are worried, they want to know, ICE knocks on the door, they do not have a criminal warrant or whatever else, Camelia, you can charm in. We, the doors are locked to them. They will not, you know, pass, and we ask them to leave. And, you know, so I think, and, and our SROs, even if they are in the building, will not cooperate. We have, you know, we have, have assurances from both Washington County and the Beaverton Police Department. So I can't speak for that community and what they need to hear. I just know that this has been up for a while, and I'm still getting questions. So I'm just curious if we can have something that, this is great for internal use, but something more geared for the community.
I'm going to share also with you what the community sees. Can you bounce back?
And, and I have seen that. And, and I don't, you know, again, I'm still getting questions. So, and maybe that's the litmus test, is like, okay, we're not hitting the mark. But yeah, no, I appreciate you guys have updated a fair bit. That maybe is the one that was more new to me.
This one is within the last two weeks.
Okay, and, right, I saw that one pop up, and I was like, oh, that's new. And I read through it. And again, still getting some questions. So I'll, I'll read through that again more closely. But my, my recollection was that it still maybe wasn't, and it didn't answer the question about the, the police departments, as far as I remember.
It's Oregon law that they don't help. It's, it's actually Oregon law.
Yes, and Washington County Sheriff's Office have reaffirmed their commitment to not cooperating. And I'm hopeful that the Beaverton Police Department will also reaffirm, in similar ways, that we, we, you know, the school board passed a resolution to reaffirm. And so, like, again, I'm hopeful that that can help create some sense of confidence.
So again, it's Oregon law that they don't, Camelia, can you answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it is the law in the state of Oregon. It was, and additional protections were put into place in 2021. All Oregon law enforcement agencies have to follow it. So while I think it is a wonderful statement from Washington County that they have made this statement, we have very little control over the statements that our law enforcement partners choose to make, just like they can't tell you as a board that you need to make a resolution, right? You wouldn't want another agency coming in and telling you what to do. So we believe very strongly that the law in the state of Oregon says that they are not to cooperate with any sort of immigration operations, and they're going to follow the law in the state of Oregon.
I appreciate that. And, and you're probably right in that regard. And I hope, again, this is great. And for, for our community, our SROs will not cooperate, you know, just to have like, some, I'm not a marketing person. I don't know what the right wording is, but our, our SROs will not cooperate. ICE will be turned away. We will notify, like, there's even questions like--
I think I want to, to answer to that piece, Tammy, about ICE will be turned away. I don't know that we're in a position to necessarily lock the door and say ICE will be turned away. If they walk into the office, we have to, we have to do, as Shelley said, we have to ask, who are they? Take their identification, find out what their purpose for being there is. If they present a judicial warrant, our staff has been trained to full stop, pause, contact me, so that we can evaluate that and determine next steps. But we're not saying you can't come in the door. That, that is not, we're not in a position to necessarily do that. We have to assess what, what they're, what they're there for. If they don't have the right paperwork, then they will be turned away.
I think that--
And that's the importance of that slide that Shelley put up, and maybe we do need to make sure that our community can fully understand it. But our staff has been trained to know, people don't get to come into the building and ask to talk to kids. People don't get to come into the building and ask for information about our kids. We have really tight practices around that, and we have, regardless of whether it's ICE or it's a law enforcement agency, and sometimes even DHS gets turned away if they do not present the right credentials and paperwork and reason for being there.
And the law enforcement council of Washington County includes BPD, Tigard Police, Toalton Police, Hillsborough, Forest Grove. So it's, it's, it's the law enforcement council of Washington County.
I want to give Shelley back the mic and let you continue your presentation. So I know you had, you said you had a little bit more information, so if we can--
I want to ask a quick question on her slide that she shared.
Sunita has a question on the slide before.
The one that you had. This one?
No, the one--
The structure one, the full chart.
So, like what Camelia was saying, that if somebody comes in, you ask for identification, and if they have a warrant or an evidence or probable cause to engage in a search of a student, what does that mean?
Okay, that is probably, now you're talking about search of a student versus request to interview. So when we're looking at search of a student, we take the person's contact information, immediately involve our administrator. Law enforcement must have a warrant or probable cause, and part of the probable cause is communicated through a legal order. So a legal order could be a warrant, or I'm sure there is probably a list of other legal order components that Camelia is very familiar with. But this is the same--
That's not the ICE part, then?
No.
That's not. That's just a searching, maybe for drugs or something like that.
Or for whatever, that they think that the thing is in the thing that they want to search. That's very specific to searching and looking for a specific item.
So just to be clear, for immigration and customs purposes, they come in, they take the information, and only if they have a warrant, they'll stop them, and Camelia comes in to the picture.
Correct.
Okay.
That is, that is our process.
Okay, thank you.
That is what we have instructed our buildings to do.
Okay, thanks.
Just one quick question. Our front desk staff aware of this? Are they trained on this? But I've also heard that when community members contact the, the front desk, they're not getting the information that they need. So I'm wondering, are we training across all boards? Are our front desk, desk staff aware of this training as well? And are they able to disseminate this information to our families when they call?
Yes, and two parts of that. So first, our principals, and making sure that our principals shared that this information with all of their staff, including our front office personnel, and then having individual trainings with each, what our technology team calls our user group. So a front office professional at an elementary school, a registrar at a middle school, et cetera. So any of those groups of office professionals who interact with our kids in community in that front office role, yes, with the exception of two groups, one has their training this week, and the last one has their training next week. Those were previously scheduled, so we got them as soon as we could get in there. And knowing that their principals had communication with them prior to their scheduled training. So my coming in and working with them will be round two or three. But it's another opportunity for them to dialogue with me and ask questions, et cetera, if they have additional questions.
I want to piggyback on that. I have personally done training on these topics back in 2016 with folks. I've done it again in 2021. I go in regularly to the user groups to talk about these, not from an immigration perspective, but just since we have turnover and to make sure our front office staffs and our registrars are really well attuned to when they can give out information, when they shouldn't, when they need to call myself or Public Safety. And so we do provide this training fairly regularly to our front office staff, because we know there's turnover from time to time, and these are really important topics. And as Shelley said, they extend to all of our kids, and this is, this is everyday business for us, is to maintain this level of security around our students and their information. So this isn't just because of, of what we're experiencing now. We do this training regularly.
All right. So I share this also with our staff because they have similar questions that you have.
Bless you.
And then for our staff, I do take them into several staff resources, things that they can, can have additional information on that are pertinent to them. So for example, when we're talking with our staff and they need to register a student who is new to the US, new to US schools, how do we do that? How do we look at transcripts? How do we make sure that we're accounting for all of those things, especially for the students who are in high school? How do we work with vaccinations? What if a student is McKinney-Vento, et cetera? So there are multiple ways inside of the staff resources that we're, we're talking with staff for things that are specific to their job function. And then this is the page that we spend most of our time on. And Shelley, can I ask you please to click that link for me? I appreciate that. Okay, perfect. And this is going to take you to our public-facing website. So this has been available for all staff since the beginning, excuse me, for all in our community, anyone with internet access, since the beginning part of January, when we started building this out. And there are multiple things that you'll see. It gets refreshed. Again, we're in week three, but it's been refreshed at least three times. As we learn more, we add more. When our community says, you know, it would be helpful if we had this, then we add more. So as you see, as we're scrolling through there, this is where I want to highlight a couple very significant pieces of information. First, Shelley, if I could ask you to scroll back really quickly, thank you, everyone, for this right here, right at the front, the Frequently Asked Questions tab. May I ask you to click that for me, please? This is, wow, that is teeny, tiny, teeny, tiny font. I can kind of see that from here, but what I can tell you is on there, listening to our, listening to our families, listening to our staff, talk about what they're hearing from, from kids, what they're hearing from parents. What I asked them to do was just in a listening session, share back, what are you hearing? And so I compiled the frequently asked questions, and working with our, our team with Shelley, had these put to the website so that families could read it for themselves, et cetera.
It could be good to point out that our families, we can click on different languages. So at the top of our website, it, there's a plethora of languages. So if somebody needs to read it in a different language, that you just click on the language, and then that will be translated to the multiple languages for our families.
Can I ask a quick question, Karen? And I'm sorry for interrupting, but this information is so pertinent, and people are asking all over the place. This is the kind of thing that should be on the front page of our website, not like something where you have to click to, like, dig down to find, because no one's going to know to dig down to find it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And one of the things that we have asked our principals to do is share the direct link so that parents just have the link. They, they don't even have to, to move elsewhere. We can do both of those.
I was going to say, because, you know, I don't have kids in the school district anymore, and I'm on the school board. I don't get parent square, you know, and I want to know that information. And there's a lot of community members out there that are really concerned for our students.
On it. Thank you. At any rate, at your leisure, please feel free to peruse these. When we get additional questions, we add the question and then we add the answer. So I'm going to take us back to, if we could, thank you so much, Shelley, for driving the slides. Yes, back to the slide deck, or excuse me, the public-facing website. Yeah, I should have said that differently. Thank you. That's all right. When you, when you get to the landing page, there we are, a couple resources that are also available for families, really linking them also to our multilingual department and connecting families. And if they want to speak to somebody about this in the language of their choice, then that's also available to them. The Frequently Asked Questions page, and then if we could scroll just a little bit back, Safe and Welcoming Schools, there we go. One of the things that we talked with principals about was this, if you print this, this is a little half sheet of paper, five by seven, these can sit out on the counter. And on the back side, you can have it in Spanish, which is our most common partner language to English in the district. So these also happen to be some of the more frequently asked questions-- So these also happen to be some of the more frequently asked questions by both staff and families. So we placed this right on this sheet. The QR code additionally takes families straight to this page so that they can have additional resources. So if they learned about this by coming to the counter, if they learned about this by coming to conferences, if they learned about this by asking their ELD specialist or the counselor questions, or one of their trusted staff members, then this is something that staff can share with them and say, here's where you can go and get more information. And staff also know that if they're working with a family and and that family wants to, like, can you show me? Yeah, come on, come alongside, let me show you, let's talk about it, and I can show you where all those resources are. So we're going to continue to scroll. And then you saw this flowchart earlier. And then you see the hot links to all of our policies one more time. These next two ones are very particular. And Director Ugana, this gets more to your specific questions. Outside organizations who spend their lives and their professional careers supporting immigrant students and refugee students and families have a wealth of information. Just the collection of community knowledge is very vast. And we're fortunate to be in the metro area where there are multiple organizations out who can, who can help students and families right at the ready. This is not a complete list, but these are a number of organizations that we've either worked with in the past or community members have said, hey, this one would be incredibly helpful, let's please link. The first one actually is the Oregon Department of Education, Civil Rights Protections. So you'll see these are in two different categories. Information regarding civil rights for immigrant and refugee families provided by these external organizations. And here is where families can learn about what can I do if, what if this happens for me, what is best for my family? The ACLU of Oregon also has a lot of information in multiple languages so that families know what their rights are. And so these are provided and vetted by these organizations through their legal, et cetera, et cetera. And most all of these are in multiple languages. Immigrant Legal Services, little red card, that's another one that we have heard. Ah, thank you, Dr. Perez, has some realia for us to be able to see. Feel free to share that with others. This is, some of the organizations provide their own recommendations to families on what information should my student carry with them. So to Director Ugana's point, this is one organization's recommendation that is helpful to some families and to students. You'll see two more below there. Resources on public charge information, and then the last two specifically. And these aren't the only ones, but these are ones that we had in multiple languages that we could place on the website. And when we learn more, we'll provide more. The Latino Network has placed information about emergency preparedness. What should my family do if? What should my child do when? Now, emergency preparedness is if there's a wildfire or if my child comes home and a parent is not there. Useful in any circumstance. Again, cultivated now under this lens of immigration. So again, available in English and Spanish. And some of the recommendations that they provide might be have copies of pieces of information and know where those are. Have copies, instead of having your child take the original, that's, I think about my own children at the ages that they are now, and I want to protect their identity and their information, a photocopy. Is that something that you want the school to have? Is that something that you want to have in your child's backpack? That's a family's decision. And these organizations provide families not only with packets of information that they can digest, but they also provide families with training opportunities. So as you see in the next section below, these are some of the local and regional community-based organizations that provide support and training for families on this topic. And they don't typically have a cost. It's really critical that families hear the information in the language of their their home and then make decisions based on their context. As I said earlier, every family's immigration story is different, whether it was my generation, my mom's generation, or six, seven generations ago. Every family has a different story. And so their context is going to be different. You'll notice that many of these have the phone numbers directly linked with the hot links. It's critical to also recognize that these folks, again, have spent their careers and their professional lives in this area of support and are the experts to be able to share, these are the resources, this is legal advice, this is how you get things notarized, this is the difference between notary and legal, all of those pieces, these are the folks that that can answer those types of questions. So to your point, should a child carry a passport with them? It's not needed for school, but if a family had concerns, I would say they're talking with an expert in this field, then they can make a decision on, is this right for my child to have anything like such a precious document with them, et cetera? And thank you, Dr. Perez, for also sharing the card that you shared. I appreciate that as well.
So some of the things that we're doing out in the community is, and these classes can be taken through, like Centro de Mujeres and Adelante Mujeres, they're providing courses that are multiple courses that share with families everything, things that I had never thought of, like if if a parent gets picked up, you need to have two sets of keys, right? So that the car, you can pick up the car. Or if a parent gets picked up, then what documentation do we need to have in order to have somebody else pick your child up? And how do you update the information that's in your student's records so that somebody else can pick them up? And then the trainings with the cards, because if you get picked up, you might be nervous and you wouldn't be able to maybe speak, but you can, you can have a card. And then that card allows, you just hand over the card. It doesn't mean that you're, don't have legal documentation, it's just that you're nervous and you don't need to answer any questions at that time. So there's a lot of organizations in Washington County are coming together to support our families, and it's information that that they've, they're trained to do, that they've done this multiple times, unfortunately, they've had to. And last week, I sat at one of our schools and took the training with some families. And those families had been invited by the social worker at the school, and that these are classes that are available to families, not from us, because we're not legally trained and not the experts in our district, but from these community partners. And so that information continues to be going out to families and that that information, including these cards and how to prepare as a parent. And I must say, it was very difficult to sit, because I actually, I have, I come from a mixed status family. And I actually sat in those courses to learn for myself and my family, but then also I was sitting there with kids. And so to have parents have to hear this information in front of their children or to, you know, have children, so it's, each family will make a decision for what would be best for their family and how they will respond. And I think as community members, I know when I was, when you were first bringing this up, I was like, well, there's some complex situations. And what you were saying, there's some of this information, it's not secret information, it's information our families need, and there's resources. So as families and students can reach out to their school social worker, and they can get connected if they don't know how. So if, when they come to you with questions, I think that those are, the resources that we have at school, they may not see it on our website, they may not see it on Parent Square, they may not see it, but it's from those safe people around them that they can connect with. And there's safe people at their schools, so I think directing them there to then connect to these classes or things is where they'll get the details.
And Dr. Perez, I'd like to add to what you were saying about safety and having a number of emergency contacts. When we're talking with our staff about this and sharing, this is how you talk with families, this is where you can direct them, this is where you can point these things out, we also ask them to remind families, hey, have you updated your emergency contacts? This is for any family, but particularly at the time of the world we're at right now. Have you updated your emergency contacts? I was having some amazing conversation with some professional colleagues over the weekend on this same topic. And what happens if your emergency contacts, your kid doesn't know them? How disarming that is for, just excuse me, how alarming that would be for a child, when somebody who is on their registration card is an approved picker-upper and the kiddo doesn't know them? So having these conversations about who your emergency contacts are, multiple phone numbers, and that your child also knows, these are some of the things that we're, we're talking about on the regular with our, with our colleagues and with all of our office professionals. And again, this information continues to evolve as we learn more. We are also leaning into our immigrant communities to ask, what is best for you? Instead of somebody who's not in their context, making the assumption, ah, this is what we should do? That's not always helpful. Really thinking about the impact over our intent. So moving thoughtfully, you've heard me say at the speed of trust in the past. And moving at the speed of trust is often through relationships with those key people at the front office and empowering them and continuing to cascade information. Not everybody gets the email or the Parent Square or the flip of paper. We're going to continue to cascade it as many times as we can so that we can get the information to as many people as possible. Coming up, I mentioned that we're going to be working with our multilingual department. Toshiko and Andy, who lead the multilingual department, have already spoken with their staff. We're having our second session tomorrow so that they can say, here are some additional questions I have, let's dig into this more deeply. For some of our families who are the most recent arrivers, that's their closest person at the school, the person who knows them best, who knows their story and is incredibly trusted, and who may speak their child's home language. How amazing is that? So we want to make sure that our staff are empowered with all of those pieces. We are going to be holding open office hours for staff here at this building as well. I know that HR has trained all of their team, several of our departments have trained all of their team, but if staff have more questions, they can come and just ask all the questions that they have. And then additionally, for our students, our student, our students advisory, excuse me, our superintendent student advisory council, coming up just next week, we're going to be talking about this there too, so that you're prepared with more information. Because I'm guessing that some of these conversations are probably happening at school too, amongst friends. So we want to make sure that we have the information out to as many people as we can, recognizing that we're in week three, and I may have more information on week four and week five, et cetera, as we continue to move. As we know more, we do more.
I want to make sure that, I know, sorry, Sunita had her hand up. And then I'll go to Ivana. And then I want to make sure if our students have any questions, we get to them too.
So on the list of your community-based organizations, I know that Oregon Department of Justice, their Civil Rights Department unit, they are giving talks on, actually, we're going to have them come and give a talk to our community seniors on bias hotline that they have, bias hate hotline, and what the civil rights they have. So they may be a good resource for the community too.
I will look into that, thank you.
And I was looking at your facts, this one more question, and it says, what do schools do if immigration officials visit the school to question the students? And it says, students don't, schools don't confirm attendance of students or release them to any outside agency, with the exception of DHS. Now, does that apply to even when they have a warrant?
Which number are you on?
It doesn't have a number, it's just, the question is, what do schools do if immigration officials visit the school to question students?
There we go, thank you.
Yeah.
If we are, if we are presented with a judicial, so there, there are a couple different kinds of warrants, and we've, we've, we are training folks minimally on that, because I really don't want front office staff trying to interpret a warrant. So what we've trained them to do is if someone presents you with a subpoena, a warrant, some sort of document that says, I have a right to question this student, to get this information, they need to pause, they need to ask the person to sit in a chair and wait while they contact the district's legal counsel. They have my cell phone, I am available all hours of the day for these kinds of questions and many more. So there are different kinds of warrants out there. The only kind of warrant that would, we really wouldn't have a whole lot of choice about cooperating with is a judicial warrant. That means it's a warrant that has been signed by an actual judge in a court. More often than not, what, what we, what I understand, and I'm not an immigration expert, I'm going to put that out there, which is why we're trying to connect our families with the experts that are out there. More often than not, ICE will not have judicial warrants. They will have administrative warrants from the the ICE agency, the local office that is, they will not have judicial warrants. It's, it's somewhat rare. So we're going to force them to produce an actual judicial warrant if they have one. If they do, there's not a lot that we can do in terms of not complying with that. But I, I, I am less concerned that they are going to be able to obtain those for our children, for a child.
Okay, that's good to know.
I'm not hearing that in, in the legal circles and folks that I'm talking with nationally, I am not hearing folks saying that there are ICE agents coming with judicial warrants for children in schools. That, that's just not something that we saw before in, in 2017, and we're, we're not necessarily seeing that yet now. And I say yet, because as, as Shelley said, we are evolving and we are learning, and we're going to take all the information in as we hear it and adapt to that.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to see Ugana go, and then our students, if you have questions, and then we might need to move on to 9:50.
I think some of my questions have already been answered. I was going to ask about, you know, when ICE agents come, i- if they have the rights to detain a kid from, I want to make sure that our students are safe in school. And that question has been answered. So just to confirm, if they don't have a judicial warrant, we can't give them our kids. And no administrator can hand over the kids without speaking to you first. When they do show up, the first step is to, you know, pause and contact you first. No decisions can be make, can be made, no student can be handed over to anybody without speaking to you first. Is that correct?
We have instructed our admins that if an ICE agent comes into the school asking to speak with a student or get information on a student, they are to pause and reach out to contact legal counsel. That is their direct instruction.
Okay.
And that's too, that also includes to the earlier question that Director Sunita had, we don't confirm if a student's there or not. Hi, is Shelley here today? We're not going to do that.
Okay. Do our students have any questions at this time?
It wasn't really a question, but as I was looking through like the languages that were provided, I know the multilingual department, they were talking about how after Korean, the two other popular languages were Arabic and Hindi, and I don't see Hindi on that. So knowing that a diverse population does speak Hindi, how are they supposed to like, how are families, immigrant families that do speak Hindi go, supposed to like go through the information then?
I appreciate that. So if, when you're on the website, if your language is not available in the dropdown menu, one of the things that we have are our internal interpreters. And that's part of, if staff have questions, excuse me, if families have questions, then right at the front part of our page, the multilingual department can connect a family with an interpreter for that language. So if a family walks into one of our schools, and whether it's on this topic or any topic, our schools are also equipped with a nice sized poster, at least notebook paper size, oftentimes a little bit larger. You oftentimes see them at hospitals too, like, what language do you speak? I speak this one. And then our staff are trained to know what to do to get support for that language so that a family can communicate across languages. Our schools are equipped with things called pocket talks, which are little handheld translators, if you will, a little bit more sophisticated than a smartphone and a, and an app for translation, not for extensive academic, deep, long conversations, but for the things that we would want to talk about with our front office professionals when we have questions. So Safa, I really appreciate that question. We do have a few ways that families can get the information and speak to somebody who's knowledgeable.
Any other student, more student questions?
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Can I just ask, I just have, it'll be maybe three yes or no questions, I'll, I'll try and be very brief. Our undocumented staff are protected this, in the same way as our students, is that correct?
We are not permitted by law to employ staff that do not have a work authorization.
Okay. And is this education going to our bus drivers and crossing guards and people that, okay, great? And is the district going to be, you mentioned our students and kind of having that conversation, are we providing know your rights education to our students? And maybe having red cards available, but an, an actual formal education? Thanks, Camelia, I see you ready to answer.
How, how we've shared this with staff? How, how we've shared this with staff. Not every student needs a, a little red card or an emergency preparedness packet. It would be inappropriate for us to assume which students do and do not. We have made it very, very clear for staff that be prepared and be ready for what your students, when they ask you, so that you can provide them with information. Again, this is on trusting relationships. So having a stack of things on the counter that are available if people ask for one. Having the ability to print something off if a person asks for one. So that's the way that we're.
And that sounds great. And then is there, like I said, a lot of the questions I've had are from staff. Is there some kind of plan for an internal FAQ for staff? And maybe that, those questions can filter through our union leaders or anything. Because a lot of my questions are from staff and I'm seeing some nodding, so.
We have a couple avenues. As I mentioned, we have things that go out in the newsletters. And that's been where we've been providing many of the updates, both through the teaching and learning newsletters and directly to principals so that they put it in their communications with staff.
We, we also have a page, page, excuse me, on the Intranet that we have set up that has all of the same links and information that is on our forward-facing page that staff can access as well.
Yeah, and I've just been hearing that, that, that there's some disconnect between the excellent education you're doing of admin, building admin, and then it filtering down. And so I don't know, I'm just curious about that. Again, I'm hearing that. I don't know where that disconnect is. And so I'm just wanting to, you know, let you know that I'm hearing that. And that the, the communications that are going out directly to staff. Again, I don't know what they are either, but I'm just hearing like, we don't, we don't know enough. So maybe something can filter in through our union leadership, building, building reps. I'm not sure what that looks like, but again, a lot of the questions I've had are from staff.
I appreciate that. Yes, we can do that. And they'll still continue to get direct emails from the OEI department as well.
Perfect, and I.
And maybe directing, directing them to OEI, that, it sounds like your newsletter that's coming out has a lot of information.
And we also have an OEI email and phone number, and staff can contact us at any time.
Chair Perez, thank you very much for letting me ask a few questions. And thank you board for doing this. I think this is really important for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate the information as well. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously. We have some items for action. We'll now move on to the rest of our items for action. First, approval of the collective bargaining agreement with the Beaverton Education Association. Our chief human resource officer, Susan Rodriguez, will provide information about this first.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Perez, Dr. Valdés, board members. Thank you for having this action item. We're happy to have it. On January twenty ninth, the BEA and BSD bargaining teams achieved a tentative agreement on a full successor contract for a three-year term from July of 2024 to June of 2027. The teams negotiated for just under a year. Economic pressures impacting staff in the district created a challenging environment for negotiations. But the teams did engage with diligence throughout the bargaining process, moving into mediation in October. And steady progress ensued with the teams reaching a tentative agreement in our fourth official mediation session. This contract provides for a cost of living adjustment of five percent of salary for the current year retroactive to July first, 2024. Followed by a four point seven five adjustment in the 2025, 26 school year. And a five percent adjustment in the 2026, 27 school year. The district contribution to insurance premiums for licensed staff will increase by seventy-five dollars a month beginning March first of 2025. And again, by an additional one hundred and thirty dollars per month in July of 2025. For the 2026, 27 school year, the insurance contribution will increase by another one hundred dollars. This contract provides for updated guidance related to communication, grievance process requirements, use of time within the school day, expectations and pay guidelines for extracurricular events and activities, working conditions of staff, bereavement leave provisions and adjustments to procedures for employee transfers. Nineteen of twenty-one articles were opened with proposed changes within this negotiation. The BEA bargaining unit voted last week to ratify this agreement with ninety-four percent of voting members approving the new contract. I want to thank you for your steady leadership throughout this process, for your engagement and patience. And for the two bargaining teams and the time and commitment that they put into the process. Thank you for trusting the teams and the process. I'm grateful that we have the outcome we do. And I recommend that the board act to approve this three-year agreement with our licensed bargaining unit.
Is there, we'll have a, we'll open, have the motion, so is there a motion regarding the BA contract agreement?
I move to approve the terms of the collective bargaining agreement with the Beaverton Education Association.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Tammy and then Justice?
Thank you. As we all know, with a good bargain, neither party walks away entirely satisfied. I know the union was hoping for a COLA raises that actually approached the cost of living that we've been seeing. And the district is digging deeper into their reserves than we had wished, given the uncertainty of the state budget. But especially with so much unknown at the federal Department of Education dollars. But I am very pleased to be able to vote for this contract. And I thank everyone in the community that reached out to support this, us during this process, support the teachers during the process. And, and yay, we're done. Thank you.
Justice?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved, the, the bargaining teams. As someone who observed these, the partial bargain, I, I, I know how challenging those engagements. Obviously, you don't, you, um, everyone's experienced how challenging this engagement was. I'm just thankful that we were able to get to agreement at this time. And I hope we could do more work with everything else that we have control and ability to influence over to hopefully make these something that we can get to the work of compensation for our educators and staff and everyone related. With more resources to make those choices and make those decisions and have those very challenging conversations. So thank you for everyone involved, and I'm glad that we got here.
Any other comments from board? I just want to thank both bargaining teams. It's an honor to have sat and participated in this process. And I'm super, you know, excited that we had the ninety-three point nine percent approval from our staff. And that we have the agreement moving forward. So I really appreciate the work that was put in and, you know, yeah, we'll leave it at that. So thank you. With that, we'll, hearing no more questions, we'll take a vote. So all in favor of approving the agreement with BEA, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you. She'll be like, I know, jazz hands over here. That the motion passed unanimously. So now we will, I think next is the Northwest Regional ESD, is that? Okay. That is Mike. I was like, wait, it's finance?
Uh, yeah, last month, ESD Superintendent Dan Goldman and ESD Board Chair Becky Timchek were here describing the local service plan to you. They, I think, shared that they need that approved before March from all their component districts to be able to offer items that are included within the plan. Remember, this is a plan. It's like a catalog of stuff we get to choose from. Doesn't mean we're buying any certain thing or in any certain quantity. We'll determine that through budget. But generally speaking, we need your approval to, so that the ESD can offer these plans across all districts.
Is there a motion regarding the local service plan?
I move to approve the ESD's local service plan and agreements for services as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, with that, hearing no questions, students? We'll go ahead and move to a vote. All in favor of approving the motion on the local service plan, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mike. Our next item is the Budget Committee Member Selection. Thanks for coming back.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't a long trip.
Do you want to, do we want to?
Well, just here we are, right? We started this process way back in August and we, it looks like the board has done their homework to come up with some candidates. And so we've got them. And it looks like you have candidates before you that have been recommended by the, the folks from their zone. And we'll get them on board here. Hopefully this evening you can take a vote so that when we do budget one-on-one next month, they'll be in place. So we'll, we'll start them on budget one-on-one, then we'll do extra outreach after that to say, all right, now that you've been through one-on-one, what, what else do you want to know? And so we'll start meeting with those folks so they'll be ready when we bring the proposed budget in May. So we thank you for your work.
So with that, do I have? Is there a motion regarding the Budget Committee Members?
I move to approve appointing the three budget committee members as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to express my gratitude to our Zone Five former committee, Budget Committee Member, Krista Belling. She gave a wonderful, amazing service to this board. Since I've been on this board, she's been our committee, our Budget Committee Member. And it was time for us to have a new perspective, add a new perspective to the committee. And I'm happy to recommend Reka to take that position. And once again, thank you so much to Krista Belling for all her amazing service all these years. We'll miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to thank Melissa Ogana and Justice for the work in, of, you know, going through the process and helping us with these recommendations. So for Zone Three, we have Dr. Jasmine Sears. For Zone Five, Reka Sridhar. And for Zone Six, Amy Webb, as the people that will be joining our Budget Committee. So thank you to you for your time and dedication to that process. With that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of our three candidates for the Budget Committee moving forward, please raise your hand and say yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously. Our next piece is our board policies, revisions for EFA local wellness programs, JHCCF. I don't know that I can say that word. Pediculosis? Oh, that's right. JHCD, JHCD, JHCDAR medications and like. And I guess with that, we'll just, I can, is there a motion to approve policy revisions?
I move to approve the policy revisions as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for our team? I was like, can you describe what? Just kidding. Will that, with hearing no questions, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of approving policy revisions, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we move into our items for future, for action at a future meeting. So we'll hear a little bit about a few policies.
Silly me, I thought there was something ahead of us. I almost got up and left you. So thank you, Chair Perez. We have two policies for the board's consideration this month. Both of them come to us as a result of some statutory changes at the legislature. The first that we are bringing forward is JHF-F slash GBNA. A, sorry, I almost left off in A. This is the suspected sexual conduct and reporting requirements policy. The change that, there's two kind of large changes in here. One is the expansion of the application of the definition of sexual conduct to extend to one calendar year after a student graduates. That's a really good change and we're glad to put that into the policy. The other large chunk of, of new language that you will see is related to providing our contractors, employees, et cetera, with information about what the requirements are around sexual conduct and reporting of it and the process there. So that is a language that's now required to be in policy by the statute. So we are proposing to add it, as you'll see here. The other policy that we're bringing forward tonight is JHFE slash GBNAB. This is the suspected abuse of a child reporting requirements. The main change here, other than some language cleanup, is that the legislature enacted guidance that all of the child abuse reporting should go through a centralized child abuse reporting system. We used to report it directly to our local DHS. And now they want us to report it through a centralized system. We can still report it to law enforcement. So the statute still has an or in there. But instead of the local office, we will be using a centralized child abuse report system. And so that is the update you see throughout that policy. And I'm happy to answer any questions folks have.
Are there any questions from the board on those or? Revisions? Okay, thank you. We will be voting on the approval at our next meeting. Our final item tonight is Craig Beaver back to provide information about transportation supplemental plan.
Hi, thank you. So very briefly, again, supplemental plans are essentially with the board approves plans for us to offer transportation into areas that are within the statutory non-transportation zones. We have a very limited, one this year, there's only three, as you can see. Total of thirty-two potential students that it might affect. That's who lives there, doesn't mean they necessarily ride the bus. All three are the result of sidewalk infrastructure improvements. Before, we had it Westview and Mountainside, areas that did not, had new construction with no sidewalks. And so we bused those kids because it was unsafe. The sidewalks are in now, very beautiful. You can see the pictures of it. And we don't longer need to do that. And then the last one for Hazeldale Middle School, doesn't affect any students, it's for new construction. They, we originally designated it as a non-transportation, as a transportation zone because of lack of sidewalks. The builder has since put it in and there's no houses there yet. So we preemptively moved to make that an NTZ. That's all we have, so thirty-two students and less than a half a bus. So next month we'll come to, in the meantime, we will reach out to the thirty-two students to let them know what we're thinking, what we want to do. And we have a mechanism through email and phone that we ask them if they have a problem, they can contact us, we can explain it to them. This small of a group, we don't normally hold a meeting for, so. And next month we'll give you the results and ask you to vote on it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much. Again, we'll, that was our final topic. The last thing on our agenda is our comments and committee reports from board members and student representatives. Maybe we'll have our students go first. Does anybody, any of our students have some? Safa?
There is something exciting. The applications for early college next year, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, will be open Feb. eighteenth. So that's next Tuesday. And the information, in-person information sessions on the same day. And this Friday, all the seniors will be applying for their last-term classes before they transfer to a university.
Thank you. Any other students? Eric?
I just wanted to comment on the, I guess, the, the, the the fact that we faced head-on the, the problems with immigration and the concerns in the community. I know personally, I was hearing a lot from friends or my mom was, and my mom was asking me, she was like, what has the principal said about this? Or, or I said, I know you came back from the meeting, when I came back from the last board meeting, she was like, oh, did you guys talk about it? What did you guys talk about? She said, I was watching and I, and I was. She said, I was watching and I, and I was, and I was, I don't remember seeing anything. He's like, what are, what are people saying about it? And what are, what are the schools, are schools going to let them in? And, and concerns like that, it's just, they're, they're, they're very real. And I'm very glad that we were able to address it in this meeting and not push it off till later. And I'm thankful to the board members that, all of you that pushed to have it here in this meeting. And I'm also thankful to receive information that I was not aware of, like the, the, the webpages on the official school district website that I can now share with people and point towards with questions that I'm not able to answer. And I'm also glad that I was able to have questions answered and more information for me to give out to my community, my community, my friends, anyone who's, who's like expressing concern. And, but yeah, I didn't know about the existence of those pages and I'm glad that I know now and that I'm able to share them. And hopefully that they're more accessible. And I believe it was either Susan, right, you said that you wanted it to be on the front page, so it was, yeah. I feel like that's really important because I, I wasn't aware that, you had to like dig for it, but that's pretty much all I wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Tessie? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just bouncing off of that, I think it is good that, like, we've talked about this today. Good to hear what happens if I shows up and the protocols to be followed, just because I know a lot of stories from both teachers and students with their worries. And I think it would give everyone peace of mind if this information was also shared to everyone, even outside of this meeting. I think probably at our next Student Advisory Council, we have like a board shareout. I think it would be good for us to probably share about the resources available and the webpages available. Outside of that, it was cool to hear about the expansion of dual-language programs and the progress of the Transportation Department. I just think those are both really cool and important ways to keep up with the times.
Thank you, Tessie.
I'm just really excited about the teacher contract and finally reaching a fair agreement. I know the student representative's first meeting, or the first school board meeting, there was like hundreds of teachers here and it was a very like, I feel like scary environment to join in. But now that we've kind of come to an agreement and I've, I've discussed this with tons of my teachers and stuff and being able to kind of reach a consensus, that's really exciting for me because it's kind of the first like big step, I feel like as like a student representative that I've kind of seen visually, if that makes sense. And so, you know, I'm just really excited about that and I'm excited to discuss it more with my teachers.
Thank you. Any board members have any?
I guess looks will go down. And then, or we'll go this way, this way, so we can get, go Susan.
This is a, just a quick comment. One, I just appreciate our, our school board, but I also want to call out our staff dealing with some really, really intense issues and being on top of things. And Shelley especially, I think you're kind of in the hot seat, you know, being the representative in terms of the spokesperson out to the community of what's happening. And it's not an easy place to be and I just wanted to call you out specifically for being there and being ready. Thank you. I know it's changing day by day and we're all living in, whatever it is going, what's, what's happening next? And I think we're all on the same page in kind of a shock and awe, so thank you.
Tammy?
Two quick things. I attended the celebration of the Lunar New Year with the Chinese-American Citizens Alliance. And the keynote speaker spoke about the Chinese Exclusion Act of the past and shared her solidarity with the current attack on our immigrant community, which of course I echo. Also want to shout out that there were two Beaverton students who participated in the event. Maddie Rajab of Mountainside and Sophia Nguyen of Southridge, both seniors. I was delighted to meet both of them and just wanted to tell everyone, they did a beautiful job of representing the Chinese-American community as well as our very own BSD. And then briefly, for Black History Month, I just want to remember Karen Lewis. Karen was a fearless leader for the Chicago Teachers Union. She left an indelible mark, not only on CTU, but also on the broader education justice movement. Her leadership redefined what it meant to fight for educators' rights while also advocating for students, schools, and communities as a whole. As CTU president, she led the union strike in twenty-twelve, which became the defining moment in the national fight to secure the future of public education. Karen died four years ago this month. Rest in power, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
At the beginning of the year, we articulated a goal for our board to have increased relationships and connectedness with our elected officials. So I just wanted to express gratitude for other elected officials, especially our federal and our state representatives. It's a tough world and their work matters a lot right now to make Oregon be as strong as possible. And we're doing a lot to reach out to them, which is really helpful. If you can attend town halls, they're always welcoming of us and they like to hear from us. Senator Solomon has one tomorrow and Solomon McLean and Sosa had one last week too. So they always welcome us there. I also want to thank the staff. There aren't many staff teams who could on, with twenty minutes' notice, produce and have such a thorough explanation of the resources that are being offered to students. So staff, thank you for responding so professionally and positively in that space. That can oftentimes be a hard place to navigate and you did it very positively. And it was really wonderful to learn from you. And it also reminded me that there's so much noise out there. And Susan and I were having little conversations. I'm like, well, I got it on the staff doc, I got it as the parent square, I got it on the Friday memo, I got it on our weekly memo. And so I had seen it multiple, multiple, multiple times, but there's so much noise. It was a good reminder that if we have something important to say, we have to be so creative to break through that noise for people to get to it. So I appreciated everybody's advice on, what about this? Could we do it this way? So it was a great opportunity to hear. And then it also reinforced our policies as a board and our agreement that if somebody comes to me with a question, especially with things moving so quickly and I am not the expert, I need to get them to the person who can answer the question. I'm not going to answer an immigration law question. I need to send the question to Gustavo, who can then get them to the right folks. And as we start sending information from the community directly to Gustavo, we can see patterns of misinformation and we can see gaps in the flow of information. Who are the folks who aren't getting the right information? But if we're isolating pockets of folks and not sharing that with staff, we're creating another gap of information and flow and we're preventing the staff from engaging with the students and the families in the way that will help them. So it just was a reinforcement for me and our agreements as a board that when we hear something in the community, we need to get it to the staff to be able to get the right information accurately and urgently to the students and families who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ugana?
I don't have so much to say. I just want to say thank you to Shelley and Camilla. It was not the, the intention to put you two on the hot seat tonight. But we all can agree that that conversation was necessary, it was timely. And I'm glad that we got to have that conversation regardless of what is out there. It's always good to hear it from the horse's mouth, not that you're a horse, but it's always good that our community members hear it from the horse's mouth. We might differ or disagree on how information has been disseminated, but we must agree tonight that this was the perfect way to go about this situation. So I am glad we did it. I am thankful to you two for stepping up and rising up to the occasion. And I'm grateful to the board members who supported this motion tonight. That was the humane thing to do and you did it, so thank you very much. To Board Chair Perez for stepping up and letting us do this tonight. And to the board members, Tammy and everyone else on this board who did support this motion, that was the right thing to do. You are on the right path of history, so thank you so very much. And that is all I'll say tonight. Thank you.
Justice?
I have two, two things. Pardon my voice, it's a little scratchy. So first, I want to share, so last week I participated with our OSBA partners or member partners, I think that's the right language, in their National Advocacy Institute, which is when annually, board, school board members from all over the country come together for training around how to do advocacy on different issues, get some information around pressing national issues around public education. And then also take that action and go engage with their congressional representation around common issues and common agenda. I think it's, I want to say, before I get to some of the details and one of the most important things, because actually very timely that our conversation today about special ed, the number one issue that we advocated around was federal funding for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which has never been funded at the forty percent additional costs associated level that it's supposed to be. There are several, and I, and I might be misquoting, but I believe one of our senators produces a bill every year to say, fund it all the way, or at least backs the bill. I'll get those facts straight. The most important thing, I, I want to make sure it's transmitted, is that it's never been funded at the level that it's supposed to be by our federal government. And then all that space has to be made up, you know, locally, state, whatever have you. And that directly impacts that, all those services we were talking about earlier today. And, you know, I don't, well, I let other people, if you want to make blame or do that, that's your thing. But the other thing I think is really important and, and I'm going to ask to, um, aboard colleagues, I think it's really important that every year someone from Beaverton step up. I took, you know, there's an open, like scholarship deal, you can ask, you know, you can request, it's the first come, first served. It's a great way, I got to connect with board members in our state from everywhere, from Hood River, John, John Day, generally Southern Oregon, because I think they're on the ESD, Eugene, a bunch of different districts. Hear some of their stories, some of those conversations around transportation that we had in common and how they differ. We talked about AI, we talked about a, a wide range of subjects. And even in the space there, I mean, as state, I think we had like twelve or thirteen people. You know, we, you know, I know we only have six congressional representatives and two senators, some other states have more folks, so therefore they obviously need more people. But, you know, I felt some kind of way that some states had like sixty, seventy people in the building going to talk to their state representative, their representatives and let them know how important public education is. And I, and I, and I'll reiterate this other fact that should always be stated. Ninety percent of all kids who get education in the United States get it in public education. Private schools or any other have never and have no intention of ever trying to meet that level of demand. When we're doing this work, whatever the bumps and bruises that occur with it, whether that's collective bargaining, figuring out how to do messaging and programming, how to find the funding, how to figure out where grants go. All of these things that we do is because public schools have to do it. And if we lose sight of that, if we allow folks to use grievance and grief and anecdotal experience to undermine the basic idea of our commitment to the well-being of our fellow humans, that happens with education. We lose, we get off the script, we get off the beat. And I really appreciated the opportunity. I think it's, again, something I really want to ask us as a board and I will probably tap someone on the shoulder. When we get there next year, say, hey, did you sign up, request the, the scholarship and figure out, you know, your work, you know, I know we got jobs, PTO, paid time off or whatever it's called, where you work when you're not here, because this is work, it's just not paid. That, we make that commitment to represent our interests. I want to thank all of the congressional offices that took meetings with different parts of the delegation, so that's Hoyle, Salinas, Bonamiti, Dexter, Bynum, and Benz. Everybody took a meeting. I want to special thank Senators Wyden and Senator Merkley, who did a joint meeting with us in person, all of us together. There's pictures, I think, on the internet somewhere with OSBA. It's vitally important and it's our role as board members, it's one of the things that can especially be assigned to us to pick up the weight on behalf of our community, to be present and be in those conversations. I'm not going to go through all, all of the other talking points of issues, but there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of representation. And so I'm really thankful that I was able to participate this year and I would encourage folks to go in the future. A second comment, which was related to the first comment. I think I may have said something similar, so I'm, I'm not, I'm trying not to go too long. But it's one of my personal responsibilities in the world. Black History Month, that's also since it was kind of put on center stage due to some federal communication. Black History Month is this month. This is my consistent public announcement. Black History Month originated in the work of black communities to take care and protect themselves. It did not start from a federal program, some public mandate, some disconnected scholars' intentions or wishes for black people, started in the community with some notes from folks who had, you know, experienced structures of, you know, the, the major educational construct of their time, which was, you know, you would give public information by doing lectures or, and have people do commenting. You might take notes and you might share data, you know, that was the way they did things in the twenties. Still do that to a degree. The, that idea was picked up by a community and said, I want this in my community as well, right? The way great things tend to spread among humans, that they say, wow, that was beautiful. I went to this thing, this was great. I want to make sure this is amplified for me, where I live. Or I'm telling my cousin, my cousin's like, oh man, I wish we had one of those, so here's how you do it. And like many other great things, even embodied in the call to action that we had tonight, which shared, one, the being human in the moment, right, very important. But also that we have things in place, but sometimes misconception, misunderstanding, outright lies can outpace truth, can outpace memory, can outpace our capacity. And, and, and especially in a moment of fear and anger and whatever else you're experiencing, you can have a, you know, we just got to do what we have to do. So as this month proceeds, I want to want to thank, and I don't know all the day-to-day things that have happened in classrooms, but I know because Black History Month means usually there's some additional lessons or sessions or community things. Thank you for participating, you know, shout out to Gerald Ford Administration for, that's where that came into the national parlance, in case you don't know the history. That's how we got to that rolling down to be something that people took as action. Again, a step that was done but was not asked for and was not required. We appreciate it, but, you know, you can't cancel it for those, if they're listening out there, you knows who he is, on the federal level. The, I'll save some other deeper thoughts, but the very challenging part and why it's important to me is I, I know that other communities sometimes have modeled and learned, just as we've modeled and learned off our experience of trying to navigate this circumstance. And when we have other acknowledgement months, I, I want to hear those stories, I want to be a part of those connections. And I fully support none of that centering a community or giving them the space to center themselves does not mean the exclusion of anyone else. There are fantastic lessons about what this, what like we've written in paper, what we've submitted in our constitution that can be learned by engaging with folks who have not had the privilege to get all those things. And so, thank you for allowing me to share that. I'll be happy to be engaged in conversations to my capacity around that with anybody present and maybe online, a little bit, you know. Life is tough, I can't promise everything, but thank you. And again, it's very, very important in this moment that we, as a good friend says, do not obey evil orders and look out for each other. And I welcome, you know, conversation and engagement and look forward to being a part of others' moments in the light, so thank you.
Thank you. Sunita?
So, every day when we get up, there's a different news. And in this period of time, I think the most important thing is making sure that your voice gets heard. And I found out about this website, it's called callsfive.org. You can connect with your legislators and talk about what you believe in or don't believe in. And thanks to them for doing the work right now. And I'm glad that we had the conversation that we had today. Thanks Tammy and Ugana and all the board members who supported that. And Shelley and Camilla, you passed the test. So, you were put on spot, but, but you did a great job, so thank you. And I'm sure whoever was listening got help with from that. And the second thing that I want to say quickly is that I truly appreciate the community coffee chats that we have with administration and the community. When a community member comes, no matter what, what issue that they bring, whether it's the importance of safety space or whether it's how to use Chromebooks for their, best to use the Chromebooks for their kids or the information about title schools, all these things are important. And for me, as one board member, it gives me direction for my question to ask. and advocacy to do for, for our community members. So you play a very big role. So thank you for being there and thank you for voicing your opinions. And with that, I'm going to say good night.
So I'll just speak for about twenty minutes now? No, I just want to thank everybody for, um, for the work that the Board does and the work that the staff's doing. I'm excited that, um, we were able to, um, get our contract, our, our VEA contract moving forward. And again, I, I think our community, our community has many needs. They've had many needs always and we're continuously trying to improve. Um, and more and more folks are coming to us with, with a variety of, um, of needs and, and things that they'd like us to support them on. And I think, um, you know, we're here for that. But also, um, we're not, as Board members, able to solve, but we can be connectors. And I think that's one of our important jobs of connecting them to, um, where they can get the right information from our staff. So thank you to our staff for, um, leaning into those. And just want to thank everybody and hope everybody has a good night. And with that, I will end our February eleventh, twenty twenty-five business meeting of the Beaverton School Board at, sorry.